All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Se go ani buju wache ya kwe kwe. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space and walk side by side into the future. Okay, so with that, as an official call to order, Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Mayor Patterson, there's quorum.
Okay, we have nothing from the committee. The whole closed meeting this evening, so we will move right to an approval of the addends. We have an addition of a delegation, a motion of condolence. We have an addition of a report under the CAO consent agenda. Can I have a mover for the addends, please? Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Seeing none, we have no presentations tonight, and so we will move right to delegations. Our first delegation this evening is Doug Ritchie, Managing Director, Downtown Kingston BIA. He will appear before council to speak to Clause One, Report Number Forty-Four, received from the CAO Consider, with respect to Downtown Kingston BIA Retail Business Holidays Act. And just a reminder to all of our delegations that you have five minutes. Mr. Ritchie.
Good evening, Mayor Patterson, members of council, all those present. I'm here to speak to you about the Retail Business Holidays Act and asking for a tourism area exemption from the Act for the Downtown Kingston BIA. We have presented this material to you before, so I'll try to keep it very short. We certainly qualify in spades as a tourism area under the criteria identified. We hear from front desk staff at hotels all the time on holiday days and weekends from visitors who say, "Why aren't the stores open?" I just spent with Donna Easter weekend in Old Montreal, right down by the Basilica. Everything's open every day, the long weekend, the streets are teeming. So we are eligible for the exemption. The law, the Retail Holiday Business Act, is antiquated. It has so many exemptions and doesn't apply to most businesses. It's a little exclusionary in its origins, and we have about 700 businesses downtown, and about 600 of them are exempt from this law already. So we're really sorted down to fashion outlets and gift stores. And of course, it doesn't make them open. It's their choice to open, and it doesn't make their staff work. It gives them the choice to work because the labor acts really are what decide what employers, how they treat their employees on these occasions. So I'm happy to answer questions. We've shown you in our report a list of 29 municipalities that already have a full year-round exemption. Many of them are nearby. It includes Picton area and Ganonok way and many others. And so I ask you to support granting an exemption to the Retail Business Holiday Act for the tourist district known as Downtown Kingston.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Deputy Mayor Turner.
Thank you, and through you, your worship. Mr. Ritchie, thank you for your presentation. Could you just tell me how much, if the person wanted to work that day, how much would they make that day roughly? Is it two times the salary or is it three times? I can't remember.
I think it's two and a half times. And then they have the option of taking holidays instead sort of thing for part of it. So really, for people that want to work and receive a premium in pay for it and to be able to afford time with their family and holidays with their family, it's... I think the restaurant industry has already showed us that it's popular with staff.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Holland.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. So you mentioned... Okay, if you could just give me a better idea of some of the numbers. 600 in your presentation, you said, were exempt already through various exemptions to the Act. Is that correct?
Well, the Act only applies to retail businesses. So if a lawyer had a big case coming up and it was a rainy Easter Sunday and they wanted to go into the office to work, there's no reason they can't. And that would apply to most of the businesses. Within the retail category, there is a very long list of exemptions that include small stores, foodstuffs, tobacco, antiques, handicrafts, pharmacies, gasoline, motor oil, nursery stock flowers, fresh food or vegetables, books, newspapers, periodicals, art galleries, liquor, any retail located in a tourist establishment like a hotel or a boatline office, education, recreation, amusement, so gaming stores, prepared meals, living accommodation, laundromats, coin-operated services, rentals of vehicles or boats, servicing and repair of vehicles or boats. So even within the retail category, there's a long list of exemptions that don't often make a lot of sense. Why would a liquor store or a tobacconist be allowed to be open but not a dress shop? And this just applies to retail. It's the Labor Act that regulates all the other businesses.
Okay, can you give us some idea, either proportion-wise, percentage-wise, how many businesses would choose to be open? Because I know that there have been some surveys conducted that can't currently operate under the restriction.
I don't expect to start with a huge, long list of businesses that are dying to be open. I was reminded by looking at the Sunday New York Times in the last couple of weeks to see their photos of the Easter parade as a fashion show. So it's one group of businesses that we hear from. It seems to be fashion-related. And Easter weekend, the biggest category for tourists in Kingston is visiting friends and relatives, VFR market, and Easter's a very big weekend. So I know my own three kids that are all in their 30s come from Guelph, Vancouver, and Toronto back to Kingston, and through social media, they know every other kid that ever went to high school in Kingston who all is coming home. And all the restaurants that specialize in brunch and lunch are... If the sun is shining, if it's not a snow blizzard or something, if the sun is shining, restaurants downtown are lined up, actually up the street. And then, because it's the way families now gather on a weekend that they get back together, and they go out somewhere for a meal. So in a way, the restaurants are becoming the anchors of the downtown entertainment district, and preferred locations for retail shops are in between several of these anchor restaurants. And then we have families walking up the street, later complaining to somebody that, "Why weren't the stores open? Why couldn't we browse through a shop while I was talking with Mom and Dad after we just had brunch?" So it's... This is just about letting those stores that choose to open when their potential customers want them to be open.
Counselor Neal.
Yes, thank you very much. I know both in your previous delegation and today, you're putting a lot of stock and really focusing on Easter as a time when, clearly, in your opinion and the opinion of some of your members, is a time when you're losing business by not being open. And Family Day potentially is one of those days as well. I guess what I'm wondering is, and this comes out of the fact that four of your members who are prominent businesspeople who lobbied me to support this themselves said, "Oh, Christmas and New Year's, we're not going to get any customers. We won't be opening on those days, but it would be really nice for Easter or Family Day." Why does it have to be all five of those days? If your target really is primarily Easter, potentially Family Day, why are you requesting all five days?
It's probably just my belief that the law is archaic and that the labor laws already take care of it. So we have, you know, I don't... Right at this time, in this moment of our current culture, I can't imagine a retailer opening Christmas, but our hotels are open and we'd be... And the airplanes are flying, and their gift shop is open, and their restaurant is open, and we have a few other restaurants open because there's people visiting the city. So I'm not aware of any retailer who wants to open Christmas, and I don't imagine there is. They've had a pretty busy three or four weeks at that point. It just seemed like... And looking at, then when we did our research to see what municipalities have what exemptions, when we realized that if anything, the trend was just to say, "Let the labor laws take care of that. We don't need this additional act," which actually the Toronto Act ruled the Retail Business Holidays Act count of order in Toronto. And then city council there passed a motion to reinstate all the bylaws for every single... There's like 75 BIAs in Toronto to reenact all of their own requests from previous times to start the consultation process to see what they really wanted, so that's not concluded yet.
Toronto is a city-state. We don't have the same power as they do.
Is there anybody else that has a question for the delegation? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, our next delegation is Hank Wavers, on behalf of Friends of the Phoebe, who will appear before council and speak to Clause One, Report Number Forty-Five, received from the Arts Recreation Community Policies Committee, with respect to the Civic Collection Long-Term Plans for the Steam Launch Phoebe.
Mayor Patterson, member of councils, ladies and gentlemen. Most of you know this historic vessel, the Steam Launch Phoebe, has been part of the Pump House Steam Museum since 1979, and the Pump House Steam Museum was started and founded by Jack Talcman in 1971. So it has been with the Pump House Steam Museum almost from its inception. Some people think a boat should not be in a Pump House Steam Museum, but it is a steam launch. It is built in Kingston by the Davey Drydock Company, and it is of the same kind of representation of the history of industry and craftsmanship like the locomotive that is displayed at City Hall. They were both built in 1914, and so she has survived more than 100 years. She came to Kingston, as I said, in 1971, and has been at the Pump House Steam Museum ever since. The Pump House Steam Museum is going to undergo an extension for the establishment of a wheelchair-accessible washroom and a couple of offices and a different entrance for schoolchildren and groups, and you can see the architect rendering of the glass extension. If the Phoebe were to relocate it at the Pump House Steam Museum, she would take at the northeastern end of the museum approximately this profile that shows how much space she would take from the rear of the museum. The brick building that you see with the arch door is not a historic part of the museum. The footprint of the Phoebe and her pavilion could be relatively small, about 5%, 6% of the yard space, and it would accomplish several things. The few lines from the museum would be completely open up if she was located at the northeast area of the museum, and the residents in the apartment building had also a free view of the lake. So what is going on and the motion that you will approve tonight relates to that. This is the current situation, and I'm sorry that I have to present that picture to you. If it was my backyard, it would look a little bit different, but this is the backyard of the Pump House Steam Museum. The gray lean-to will be taken away, and the glass extension will be protruding from the brick building approximately twice the size of what you see here in the gray lean-to. So it doesn't come much further than the gate that is on the left side that is partly closed. So that leaves an enormous space between the new construction and the Phoebe shelter that is currently winterized and is on the right of the picture. The space between the new building and the Phoebe exhibit is at least a city street two lanes wide. Staff has concluded that the exhibit building has to be removed for construction to go ahead. We think that is not necessary. We are not necessarily opposed to a relocation, but we would argue that a relocation at the northeast end where you can see, which is basically parallel with the apartment building, would be a good thing. She belongs to the Pump House Steam Museum, but there is also a motion before you that would look for other places in the city of Kingston. These two options replaced another option where the Phoebe would be sent to the United States. So we are basically behind the plan as long as our fear of when the Phoebe shelter is dismantled, that nobody forgets about it and that the Phoebe will remain in the public eye as much as possible. This is the current exhibit building. It is built by students from the Limestone District School Board, and the Phoebe is restored over a period of about, from 1998 to 2003, so that's about, what, five years by volunteers, citizens of Kingston, mostly professionals and skilled people, who, approximately 15 people, who put an awful amount of time and resources in the project.
Thirty seconds. Thirty seconds. So 30 seconds left.
Thirty seconds, okay. So it would be a pity in the first five seconds to do away with all this. If you dismantle it, I hope you will recognize the contribution from students from the Limestone District School Board, be very sensitive about dismantling. It's a timber frame structure that fits together like a mechanical set, and it should be dismantled as such, and every joint should be numbered. The Phoebe can go in storage, but we, as I said, are very afraid that she might never come out, but maybe you find a solution for that. She should stay in Kingston. The trailer you see is her support and her local mobility, and I thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions for the delegation? Counselor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Mr. Wavers, for that great presentation. I remember hearing from you about the idea of the recessed, like the dugout part of the new exhibit. So the height of the exhibit, would it interfere with the residents of the apartment building? Because that's in my district, and I'm wondering if the residents there would be okay with the pavilion moving to where you suggest.
Yeah, you can see that it's quite a large exhibit shelter at the moment, and we agree with the fact that it is not properly located. Either this shelter can be modified or a new pavilion should be built for her. But the trailer that I showed you, which is both a transportation medium but also a cradle for her support, Metal Craft Marine, by the way, has helped us building these cradles so that the hull shape is preserved. And what we have in mind, you could theoretically take the wheels off the trailer and position her a little bit below grade so that the water line that you can see, the division between the white and the brown, would be roughly a foot above grade, and that would basically create accessibility. Everybody could see her both from the water line up and also the need for the pavilion can be much lower so that the elevation becomes much more acceptable.
Thank you, and I agree that it would make the exhibit easier to appreciate if it was more...
Yes.
No, we're down. Thank you.
Counselor Sennett.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. Yeah, I like the idea of the trailer and removing the wheels and bringing it down so that it's lower, especially for short people like me. And I just wondered, I've just heard so much about these enclosures. What does the Friends of the Phoebe recommend in terms of like over top of the Phoebe? Like, does it have to be enclosed on three sides or can it be open like it is right now at the pump house? Or do you want to see it fully enclosed? I've heard everything over the last few weeks, so I just wondered what's the current thinking right now.
At the moment, it's winterized, so the winterized condition, or you see just a winter, a little corner of the shelter in its winterized condition. But if you go to the... If you go to the summer exposure, at the moment, we have a screen that will protect the Phoebe from the winds from the lake and any rain that might be driven into the structure, and that's quite adequate. In the winter, the staff encloses the east and the west side of the pavilion as well. So now she is closed from the south, the west, and the east, and on top of that, we cover her with, or the staff at the moment, covers her with a canvas cover. We have at least five to six boat specialists and people from museums, curators and others, both from the United States and Canada, who say that this is a perfect location for her. A boat, well-ventilated, out of the sunlight, is perfectly protected. She survived 104 years. She's in a very robust condition now. We restored her extremely well. Staff claims that they had some maintenance to do and it cost them $10,000, but if you really cooperate with volunteers, that price can be brought way down, and we could... I guarantee you, and I'm a professional engineer, and we have restored this boat, and I have been in the building industry myself a little bit, I can guarantee you that the boat will easily survive another 100, 200 years under these conditions that I just mentioned to you.
That sounds great. Thank you very much.
Seeing... Counselor Allen.
Thank you for your presentation. You mentioned in the report that there may be seeking other locations other than the Pump House Steam Museum. Do the Friends of the Phoebe have ideas of what might be appropriate locations for council or city staff to consider?
Yes, thank you. I think during the discussions and the newspaper articles and the interviews on TV, et cetera, et cetera, the Phoebe has taken on a quite a high profile, and we get, at the moment, we get suggestions from all sorts of people in the city for different locations. But two or three serious locations would be one beside the locomotive at Confederation Park. That is actually proposed by a retired executive director of the Museum of Civilization and the War Museum in Ottawa. Another one is at Fleury Park. The only problem we see there is that Fleury Park is about five years down the road, so she would have to be basically five years in storage before she gets exhibited at the Fleury Park. Another proposal would be to exhibit her very close to the dry dock at Metal Craft Marine, because that dry dock is where she was built, and so there would be a historical connection between the Metal Craft Marine area, which is right beside the Fleury Park, and Tom Rowe for Metal Craft Marine. One of the co-owners has shown an interest in cooperating on that particular location. And then there is one at the McLoughlin Woodwork Museum. It would be very easy probably to put her there. McLoughlin Woodwork Museum has only 4,500 visitors, and latest report from staff of the Pump House Steam Museum is 15,000 visitors. And so there are pros and cons to everything, but there are even more. People come up with a list of locations that citizens suggest us, and it will be at least half a dozen.
Okay, great. Just to follow up as a suggestion, a place that I thought might make sense would be the Rita Locks, the Kingston Mill Locks in Kingston, where there's quite a bit of history. I don't know if you have thought about that or if there's an issue with that because it wasn't in your list.
No, we haven't thought about that because that would be Parks Canada, if you can sell it to Parks Canada. In 1982, Parks Canada paid the volunteers of the Phoebe together in Ottawa on a sale pass. So if you can get it to Parks Canada, and they will build you a beautiful pavilion, we would have no objections to be having her close to the locks. But I don't know. The marine museum site was just sold to a private person, and I don't know if you can get another boat back to Parks Canada.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our third delegation this evening is Justine Scala, owner of Minotaur Games and Gifts, and Adam Pochey, manager, Kingston Gaming Nexus, who will appear before council and speak to Clause One, Report Number Forty-Four, received from the CAO Consider, with respect to Downtown Kingston BIA Retail Business Holidays Act.
Okay, yes, I'm Justine Scala, and I am here to talk about the Retail Business Holidays Act, as mentioned. I just want to, I've spoken here before on this issue, so I'm just going to touch on three things very briefly. One, I wanted to talk about the role that independent businesses play in this town as community spaces. So I feel that it's not simply about shopping. I know that from my own experience, people love that I'm open on, and I'm legally allowed to be, on Easter, on Good Friday, because it's a place people can come, they can meet We serve as a community space, and in fact, that's one of the major reasons that I'm in business, is because I don't make a lot of money, but it allows me to own a space where I can connect with people. I see that businesses play a role in communities that go far beyond selling to people. You know, that's where revolutions start, in coffee shops and in small businesses, so watch out. I'm just... I'm just, Adam's going to talk about employees. I'm just going to very briefly say, the subject has come up that employees might be forced to work on civic holidays. I would point out that we already have many, many businesses that are open on those days. If there are employees who are forced to work on those days, then, you know, if that is happening on any kind of scale in this city, then we need to put a stop to it. That kind of illegal activity and abuse of employees is atrocious. But I think this is a separate issue. And finally, I just want to say that the real reason, the biggest reason why I am in favor of getting rid of the Retail Business Holidays Act is that I feel that it is, at this point, a discriminatory act because the vast majority of businesses can be over the exemptions, in fact, are quite arbitrary. What we're really doing is penalizing, in this city, we're really penalizing the clothing stores. And I happen to know that they are going through a hard time at the moment. And I just, I just think that it's arbitrary and unfair that they are forced to be closed on these days when the rest of us can be open. So that's my two cents, and I'm going to pass it over to Adam.
Hey, hello. First of all, I would like to reiterate, enough people's problems with the idea of the Holiday Act is that people will be forced to work on those holidays. And they don't realize that there's, this act isn't changing whether they being forced to work or even they can work. It's just allowing businesses to be open. The idea of being forced to work is a whole separate issue, and it's already an illegal action. So the idea that businesses, more like other businesses, will be forcing people to work on these five days is already an illegal act. That if there's, this is actually going, if this is going on, they should contact like the city council or anyone to actually suggest that, yes, my boss is forcing me to work. This is actually an illegal action. And so that's actually a complete separate issue than allowing certain businesses the opportunity to be open. I know for a fact that especially on Easter, we have a huge amount of tourism. And yet, the Holiday Act actually states that Kingston's tourist season starts two weeks after Easter. It actually states that in the current act. So no matter what, this act should be amended, changed. But the easiest way is just to get rid of it entirely and then allow the businesses the choice to be open. And then the other thing from my personal experiences, having my day off on a Monday is the worst day off to have when there's a holiday. Because then you just can't, you're not allowed, like you can't do anything. It ends up just being a de facto laundry day because I'm actually not given the ability to do anything.
Thirty seconds.
And for most of the city, there's, I get so many questions, both when I own a store and when I manage a store, of why can't, like, when we're closed, why can't we be open? Why can't they come in and actually enjoy the day? It's not a day of not, like, if you're, you can choose to spend your day with your family. You should be able to have the ability to be able to do something else if you don't have a family or if you want to actually be active. And this city prides itself on its tourism. And yet, we have an act that actually forces stores not to have the ability to be tourist areas on these days.
Thank you, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Counselor Allen.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you for your presentation. The, I should, I probably should have asked this of Mr. Ritchie, but I think you probably can handle this. Do you think that being open these, having the potential to be open these additional five days of the year may help us fill some of these empty storefronts that we have in downtown Kingston?
Well, I know it does help businesses, especially the biggest issue with the majority of empty stores is that these are the small businesses that rely, that aren't making massive amounts of money and the ability to help their customers and at the same time, it's make a little bit of money. Because part of it is, if you want to be open, you can. But the thing is, if you want to have employees, there's an actual extra cost. But there is a benefit, especially for smaller businesses, that the owners can be there on their own. And so that's actually a much better opportunity to be inside the downtown core. And at the same time, when you have large tourist times of the year, that's the best time to be open and, it's, the idea is, yes, stores can make a little bit more money, but it's more on the actual customers giving the opportunity. But I do believe it will definitely help out a lot of the stores downtown.
Counselor Neal.
Just very quickly, you talk about the arbitrary nature of the act, and I totally agree with you. It's puzzling, to say the least, when you read what is exempt and what isn't. However, there is an arbitrary nature to what's being proposed as well. Because the BIA is a very, kind of geographically arbitrary zone. If I own a business west on Princess Street in the Williamsville district, I wouldn't be able to open. If I owned a business in Portsmouth Village or Berryfield, I wouldn't be allowed to open. I think you're aware, in 1998, it was expanded citywide. Would you have any objection to supporting the idea that we're a tourist city? And if one small geographic area is granted this, the city should be granted. Other employers should be granted this.
Absolutely, I would have absolutely no objection to this being citywide if that's what the rest of the city wanted. I know Williamsville is going to grow over the next little while. Portsmouth is a great little part of town, just to cite the examples you've given. No, I have absolutely no objection, and I don't think anyone with a business downtown would. I can't obviously speak for everyone who's not here, but that is my general feeling.
Thank you very much. That was the correct answer, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you, seeing no other questions? Thank you very much. Are there any other delegations to add? Yes, Counselor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. I have given the clerk's delegation, like to waive the procedural bylaw to allow an extra delegation from Luke Harris about report forty-three from the CAO, clause B, red light cameras.
Okay, so we will, we will call the vote on the motion to waive the rules to add Mr. Harris as a delegation. Oh, yes, do we have a second? Seconded by Counselor McLaren. So moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor McLaren. And that carries. Counselor McLaren?
I also gave the clerk a motion to move, to waive the bylaw to allow Bill Visser to speak to the issue with the Phoebe, seconded, I believe, by Counselor Shell.
Can I just get that motion? Okay. Seconded by Counselor Stroud. We'll call the vote. And that carries. Counselor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I also have a motion asking to waive the bylaw to allow Patricia Fiori of the recently Museums and Collections Committee, now the Kingston Heritage Committee, to speak with respect to the Phoebe.
Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Allen. And that carries. Okay, so we have three additional delegations. So first, I will invite Mr. Harris, who will speak to council regarding report number forty-three, item B, with respect to red light cameras. Mr. Harris.
Hi, thanks for getting in here tonight. It's kind of last minute for me, Peter Stroud. I sent an email off this morning after hearing the radio about the red light cameras coming into Kingston, and there was going to be a vote tonight. So anyways, I sent an email off to everybody at the table. I don't know if you had a chance to read it. If not, I'll try and reiterate some of the things that I wanted to say. Also note, I'm a little scattered. I coach minor hockey, three teams right now, and work, so this was a bit rushed to get together. But essentially, I urge you to stop or delay the implementation of the red light cameras. You know, I didn't know a lot about the red light cameras up until this motion, other than to the fact that they feel wrong to me. I don't like putting a traffic camera on an intersection that basically is just a diversion. Well, you can't go through this red light here. We're going to mail you a ticket. Nothing on your demerit points, nothing else. But you know what? Make up your time on the next intersection, because there's nothing there. In order to do this negative policing, where do you draw the line? You know, do we put cameras on stop signs? Do we start putting cameras everywhere? Oh, you old jaywalker, oh, let's email him a ticket. It's wrong, and it's not, I don't think, what Kingston is about. I think that there's other options that need to be explored. My Googling today, which was literally twenty minutes, shows so many initiatives out there. This is nineteen nineties, this red light camera thing. And it's old, cities are taking it out. We need to move towards more proactive, more traffic engineering. We have computers now, we can do data. Just some negative things. And I have all these studies here that check and show. I didn't have time to read these, and I'm not an expert. But I hope that maybe you can delay this and give it to engineers who can interpret it better than I can. But, you know, most of these are around North America, even some from Canada. But 2008, University of South Florida, report, comprehensive studies conclude cameras actually increase crashes and injuries, providing a safety argument not to install them. Public policy should avoid conflicts of interest that enhance revenues from government and private interests at the risk of public safety. Here's another one from Winnipeg, 2006. The graph shows an increase 58% in the number of traffic collisions from the cameras from 2003 to 2004. Even from our own ministry in Ontario, Transportation, right here, 2003. Compared to the average number of reported collisions occurring in the before period, the average yearly number of reported collisions increased 15.1% in the year after the cameras were installed. Cameras do not promote safe intersections. They make drivers nervous. They cause drivers to slam on their brakes because they're scared to get this ticket in the mail. I've driven out west. They got little flashy lights, tell you when things are going to change. You can stop, right? But the alternative, like my solution here is to look at the alternative of extending the yellow lights a little bit longer. You know, right here is another study. It says, "The answer to the rash of red light violations is relatively simple. Increase yellow light duration. Almost 80% of red light entries occur within the first second of the red light indication." Studies in Arizona, Georgia, Virginia, and Maryland have shown a reduction of 73% to nearly 100% in red light entries after increasing the yellow light duration. Several cities have dropped the red light camera programs after adding only one second to yellow light durations. So there's options here. And promoting and educating the community of Kingston to, not just these ten intersections, but to drive safely through intersections. You know, have engineers look at, why are people infracting this red thing? Maybe they need a little bit more of a yellow light or a countdown timer to when it's going to be red so people aren't forced to make these decisions and have to slam their brakes on. But promoting it will increase safety in all our intersections in Kingston, not just these ten. It'll increase safety in our neighborhoods. It'll increase safety, like I said, at all the lights, for much cheaper by just having someone look and see, is there guidelines to how long those yellow lights should be? It should be geared to speed, in my opinion, but I'm not an expert, right? If you're doing eighty, you need a five-second yellow light so people can see it. And the other point they make was the visibility of the yellow lights. Are people in certain intersections racing through the reds because they can't see the yellow? Is it certain times a day? You know, so you can put little things on the lights? I'm just saying that the red light cameras, this data, and there's fourteen reports that I quickly found showing it makes the intersections less safe.
Thirty seconds.
Right, so let's look at some alternative options. Delay this. Have someone look at increasing the yellow lights and maybe spend $100,000 promoting safety in all our intersections, stop signs in neighborhoods, yada, yada, yada. And let's promote good rather than fear. Let's promote good for people, you'll want to make them stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, he's nervous.
Counselor Allen.
Thank you for your passion, and I saw your email today too, and I appreciate your presentation today about this. I guess when we're looking at other options here, I mean, one of the best options in terms of traffic lights and safety is actually to replace traffic lights with four-way stops. That's one of the most proven ways to increase traffic safety around the city. And so I'm wondering if four-way stops or ensuring that our speed limits are low enough so that people aren't going eighty when they get to our traffic lights are the kinds of things that you're looking for. I know we have curbs and bump outs that would be most important, but I don't think we're trying to, I want to get a sense of what kind of alternatives are concrete instead of this to curb the aggressive driving that the red lights are trying to stop.
Well, thanks for your question. From, again, from my quick research today, you know, clearly, a four-way stop at Princess and Gardiner's Road is not going to work. The volume is not there. And in that instance, you would see that the four-way stop wouldn't stand up. But, let's see here. Right here, so longer yellow lights is a proven. I mean, I have some studies showing that the longer yellow lights do work. But here's a quote. "Extending yellow light times by as little as one second over the ITE minimum," which is an American standard, I guess, "has proven to reduce accidents by a massive 40% and improving signal visibility reduced violations 25%." So, you know, like you said, eighty, you can't really control the speed limit. So a yellow light has to be determined on the speed. I mean, sometimes you're coming down a road. It's an eighty zone, and there's a yellow light. When I was in Calgary, and you're driving in an eighty, they have about a hundred meters back from the light. There's a sign, and it says, "If this is flashing, you will not make the light." So it's great, you're driving, you're doing eighty. Nope, it's not flashing, you know you can continue on. And it provides me, as a driver, to do the right thing and go safe. People's perceptions, in my experience, it's hard. My wife and I see things different. When that light goes yellow, it's difficult for some people to judge, should you go, should you hit the brakes, right? But if they know they have that five seconds or that extra second to think, they're not going to be so rash to step on the gas or the brakes. And standardizing those times across the city, I think, is key.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Counselor Bowman?
Thank you, your worship, and through you. Thanks again for your presentation, Mr. Harris. Just a quick question. You mentioned the driver feedback signs. So when you personally drive, do you look for the countdown? And when you see the countdown, does that kind of allow you, as what you mentioned at West, the ability to gauge how fast you're going, how much time you have, and whether you can safely stop or whether you can safely proceed through that intersection?
I use a combination of things. I mean, I consider myself a pretty safe driver. So I always was taught in driver's ed to sort of have a no-go zone. So when I reach a certain point, I already have made the decision in my mind whether I'm going to go through the intersection if it turns yellow or not. But, so, no, I personally don't use those side things here in Kingston. Especially in Kingston, because they're the pedestrian ones. I don't think they're actually designed to be used. But I did find it extraordinarily useful when I was in Calgary, driving in unfamiliar territories and speed limits, that they had those flashing signs there, and I did use them when I was there. I just, it was great, because I was driving in a different city, and I just, oh, that's flashing, I better make sure I'm going to stop at the next light.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So seeing other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next delegation is Bill Visser, who will speak to counsel regarding a report number forty-five from the Arts Recreation Community Policies Committee, item number one regarding the Phoebe.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me tonight. For those of you who've heard, my name is Bill Visser. I was the Chair of the Museums and Collections Advisory Committee, but that committee is now defunct and now rolled into Heritage Kingston, so I'm speaking as a resident, not as a member of that committee. Tonight, I'm here to ask you to open up the options for the Phoebe. Don't restrict the Pompeo Steam Museum by keeping an artifact in a place that could be used for other programming. Museums tell stories. That's what they're designed to do. Let them do it. Phoebe is a part of the story of Kingston's industrial and boat building past. That's the Inner Harbour area. Maybe she should be there. She deserves the proper exposure. The current location is okay, but after the renovations are complete in the, by the way, southwest corner, not north. North is on Ontario Street. After the renovations are complete, she will be in the way, making programming difficult and cutting the view from the water of the new Pompeo Steam Museum, which we want to showcase, which we wanted to showcase. So those people, as they're sailing by, boating by, would say, "Great, here's another space we want to go to." The Phoebe deserves better than that. Sharing artifacts is how we share stories. Why not celebrate the work of our volunteers, the work that they did, showing where industry thrives in Kingston by showing other communities, other museums, that this is how it's done? As we've seen in the earlier presentation and heard, the Phoebe was built here to fulfill an order for, as an inland lake boat, not for the Great Lakes. She went to Muskoka and Ohio. She finally retired here in Kingston, where she was reconstructed and fitted with an engine similar to the one that she originally had. Her connection is much more with the industrial background and boat building, as I said before, rather than the Pompeo Steam Museum. Yes, steam was the engine that was used, but it was also the technology of the time. Please, please, consider sharing, showing off, celebrating the Phoebe. Don't restrict her. The MACAC wanted to share her. Rumors that she was destined for Ohio, not true. That was only one potential option that was available. The objective was to see if other museums wanted to share the story, not necessarily just in Ohio, which, by the way, is where her original engine currently resides. It's not a final solution. It's just an example. The Museums and Collections Advisory Committee is comprised of mostly of museum professionals, historians, and academics, along with, like myself, history storytelling enthusiasts. The U.S. philosopher Eric Hoffer once said, "In times of change, the learners inherit the earth, while the learned find themselves beautifully equipped to deal with a world that no longer exists." Please, let us let people keep learning. Let us help keep telling the stories. Allow the Phoebe to go to other areas. Allow the Phoebe to be used and let her tell her story somewhere else and open up the space for other Kingston stories to be told. Please allow the change. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Stroud.
Just like to thank you, Mr. Visser. Let's like to hear your opinion on something we've already been speaking about, other possible locations, such as what Counselor Allen had asked. Do you think that it's feasible, for example, somewhere in the Inner Harbour area? And what would, how would you see that happening? And where do you think the opportunity is there?
Keep in mind that as an advisory committee, MACAC had no control over budgets or anything, so we spoke purely to the holistic concept of, you know, what we think is best for museums and artifacts and items in our collection. So with that preamble, yeah, I think that the Inner Harbour would be a fantastic place for it to be. I think it makes a lot more sense there. Dougthor Park is part of the waterfront plan is being worked on. Yes, it's going to be a couple of years down the road, but it is being worked on. It's still early stages in the waterfront plan, even though it's been approved already. It can always be amended. I think it would be a fantastic place to showcase her there. It makes a much stronger connection to it. In the interim, yes, one option is to put it in storage. Another option is perhaps there is another location that we'd like to show and tell the story. The report indicated that a number of local areas, local area museums, had been approached, and they couldn't fit it in at the time, Ohio being the only one who indicated that, yes, should the opportunity arise, they think they could probably take advantage of the situation. But there are other areas that wanted to do it. I believe that the Cataract Mall, for example, they really wanted to show her until they found out she was too big. So, yes, to answer your question, I think the Inner Harbour would be a fantastic place.
And I have one other question. You, as a museum chair, do you know if the Phoebe would be designated a cultural heritage property and subject to the export rules through the government, federal government regulations over exporting cultural property?
No, she would not be. She already is. She's an artifact. We cannot just get rid of her. We cannot sell her. She has to be careful when we transport her out of the country. We cannot just dispose of her. There are laws, provincial and federal, say, "This is how you must deal with your artifacts." So it would be very, very difficult to lose her.
Counselor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. When, in your discussion, you touched a little bit on the safekeeping of the Phoebe and even mentioning the Inner Harbour. What would you see as a way to keep the Phoebe safe in what would be a new, much more exposed location?
Again, I deferred, I was the enthusiast, so I deferred to the museum professionals who were on the committee more. And I'm not a mechanical engineer, but to me, my understanding is that the best thing that we could do for the Phoebe is to make sure that she continues to be sheltered and in a protected area, not necessarily climate controlled, but just well-protected. For example, down in Clayton Museum, the bulk of their artifacts are stored indoors. The only ones that are really stored in exposed areas such as this are the ones that are used during the summer, open season, and actually put on the water and actively used. That makes sense for them. But once you're out of the water, you want to do it. I'm a, I teach power boating and sailing as a personal thing, and I love boats, and I really think that she deserves better. But in order to store her, I've seen wooden boats, they exposed, such as this, they take a much stronger beating than people realize. Sorry if I had to say that.
Seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our final delegation this evening is Patricia Fiore, who will also speak to the Arts Recreation Community Policies report concerning the Phoebe.
Thank you and good evening, your worship, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Patricia Fiore, and I'm a heritage consultant. And I've spent most of my career working in the heritage and in particular, the museum field with museum staff of all professions, curators, collections managers, conservators, et cetera. From my experience, I would like to say a few words to provide some context for the discussion around the Phoebe. Like the Phoebe and her dedicated group of volunteers, in museums across the country, there are groups of passionate and dedicated volunteers who take on the task of preserving and restoring particular artifacts they believe are special. Steam locomotives, planes, cars, boats, buildings, et cetera. While it is true that each of these artifacts are special because of the story they represent to the history of the community, this is not the only truth. Like Kingston, museums across Canada have thousands of objects in their collections, each one representing a story which is important to the community, each one with significance, and each one must be properly documented and researched, carefully handled and stored in a manner that will preserve and prevent it from further deterioration. And most important, each object must have an opportunity to be interpreted and presented to the community to tell its own unique story. All of this work must be done according to the professional museum standards set down by ICOM, the International Museum Body, which the Canadian Museum Association and museums across Canada work hard to abide by, including the heritage staff here in Kingston. Given this onerous public trust responsibility that museums have, it is a blessing to have a group of volunteers who are so passionate about a particular artifact that they will donate hundreds of hours to preserving and restoring the object so that future generations will benefit. Museums owe a great deal to these volunteers. Stories and objects in museums everywhere would be lost without their work. But it's absolutely important that we don't lose sight of the fact that every object within a collection deserves this attention. Each object represents a piece of the community's history and identity, and each one deserves to have an equitable amount of resources given to preserve it, research it, and have it interpreted and exhibited for the community. The object may be small, like the promissory note for the construction of City Hall, this one, in eighteen forty-four, or very large, such as the Jackson Printing Press, which was recently donated to the City of Kingston's collection. But they all deserve the same treatment as the Phoebe. The Jackson Press has a long and wonderful story to tell about the history of Kingston. The curators and the collections manager will face the same types of questions, how to preserve this huge artifact and place it on exhibition for the whole community to enjoy and learn about its role in the Kingston story and identity. They have to make decisions for every artifact in the collection, and like museum staff everywhere, they face these decisions every day and wish they had a dedicated group of volunteers for every precious artifact in their collections. Ultimately, directors, curators, collections managers, education programmers seek to preserve their collections and use them to bring light to as many community stories as possible in order to provide a holistic perspective on the history, the culture, and the identity to which all members of the community may relate. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no questions? Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on, we have no briefings this evening. Are there any petitions to present? Seeing none, we do have a motion of condolence, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner, that the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to Darren Smith, Supervisor of Recreation Facilities with the Recreation and Leisure Services Department on the passing of his mother, Cheryl Smith, on March twenty-six, twenty sixteen. Our thoughts are with Darren and his family during this difficult time. Call the vote? And that carries. We do have one deferred motion, moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Cannon. I'm going to skip the whereas clauses this time. I read it in full once at our last meeting, so just to skip to the resolved clause, therefore be resolved at council support, the request of AMO, LAS, and MFOA to amend Ontario Regulation four thirty-eight dash ninety-seven as amended of the Municipal Act two thousand and one to allow municipalities to invest consistent with the prudent investor standard if such investments are through the One Investment Program, and that this motion be forwarded to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, Local Authority Services, and the Municipal Finance Officers Association of Ontario to confirm the support of council of the City of Kingston. Counselor George.
Thank you, your worship, and I appreciate the fact you didn't get into all those whereas clauses again. Two weeks ago, I did ask for deferral, and it's because I wanted to seek a little more information. I was attending an AMO conference last week and in discussions with Counselor Hutcheson, who had some concerns as well. I can tell you that there are thirty-seven other municipalities of our size that have approved of this motion and have sent it forward. AMO has made it very clear that it is becoming time-sensitive, and if we wish to support this opportunity to seek other means of non-taxable revenue through an investment process that we currently don't have, that we should be supporting this, and they will be moving forward with their presentation to the province in hopes that they will amend the Municipal Act to allow for this to take place. I can tell you a little bit, without getting myself in the trouble of what we're currently facing as municipalities, all four hundred and forty-four of us in the province of Ontario. I think I mentioned about a month ago that there was a huge deficit looming in the very near future, and some numbers that have been crunched, and I can't disclose all of those at this point in time. I don't think a lot of people realize, but AMO is like its own political body, and so a lot of what we discuss, unfortunately, I'm not at liberty to come back and discuss with the mayor or other members of council, which puts me in a very difficult position because I don't want my friends in the press to be putting something out there that someone else is going to read and make inquiries as to why am I letting the cat out of the bag. One thing I can tell you, though, and I think a lot of municipalities and probably our Treasury team and others are well aware of is that, you know, that we're talking billions of dollars that we are attempting to find sources of which we, as municipalities, can seek funding through non-taxable revenue sources because we don't want to continue to go to our residential, our current light industrial, commercial tax base. We just can't continue to do that, or we're going to put people out of their homes, we're going to put businesses, we're going to have empty storefronts. So we have to look at other means. So that is something that we're actively pursuing, and we will actually be making a presentation to the AMO representation that will be there in August, what we feel is an appropriate recommendation to put forward to the council, and we're hoping that we're going to get all of those who are there, representatives of municipal councils throughout the province to support us. So that will be coming up at a later date. One of the challenges that we are facing, and one of the reasons I support this, is because of the huge deficit that's looming out there. We're not in a bad position here in the City of Kingston, but the reality is, the average municipality in the province of Ontario, if they were to make up what it's going to take to meet that debt load without looking at other potential revenue sources other than their residential tax base, I can tell you, you're looking at numbers that exceed an eight percent tax increase every year for the next ten years. That's going to put people out of their homes because people just can't, especially those that are on fixed incomes, they can't do it. There's just no way in the world they can do it. So this, along with a number of other recommendations that you're probably going to see coming forward for MAMO between now and the, and hopefully what we'll have prepared for all of the delegates in August, are seeking support for us to go to the province and plead for the tools that we need to look at other sources of revenue that we don't currently have. And there are some out there. We have been actively discussing them, and they will become knowledge to all of you around the horseshoe here, hopefully within the next two to three months. But at this point in time, I would ask that you support this recommendation that's before you this evening. I have had some discussions with our treasurer. I think at this point in time, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but I think she feels comfortable with us supporting this. At least it's a first step.
Thirty seconds.
Getting the information to the AMO board to show that we do support, along with the other municipalities, and at least getting some type of recommendation before the province for their consideration. There's no assurance that they're going to support this, but at least it's something that we're presenting to them in order to look at some other tool that we could use for revenue. So I hope that I'll garner your support this evening.
Thank you. Counselor Neal.
Yes, just one very quick question. Being a longtime high school drama teacher suggests that I should always defer to our city treasurer or CAO on complex issues. My only concern, and perhaps the treasurer can speak to this, is that more open, free investment, I know, created heroes for a number of years in some municipalities in the States, particularly California, but when the bull market turned to a bear market, some of those cities went bankrupt. some of those cities went bankrupt. Are you comfortable that the due diligence suggested within this proposal will protect municipalities from that kind of exposure?
Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you, through your worship. Yes, I am comfortable. I think, just to provide a little bit of background on it, so people sort of understand a little more of what this is. So first of all, this is the One Fund that is managed through AMO that is making this request to the province. The City of Toronto actually already has this ability, and they're the only other ones, but the One Fund is asking for it as a professionally managed fund. So for us here in the City of Kingston right now, we do not invest through the One Fund. So at this point in time, it really wouldn't affect us, but what it does do is it switches for them, right now, they're subject to the same investment requirements that we are under the Municipal Act, and it's basically a shopping list of what we can invest in. The challenge with that is that the Municipal Act doesn't change quite as often as the market does, so it can't react quickly to that. And so sometimes even things that are in the Municipal Act are not things necessarily that in today's market we would even want to invest in. What the Prudent Investment Standard does is it takes that shopping list away, so it gives them much more flexibility in terms of what they can invest in. But we still have objectives around rate of return, preserving our principal, making sure the cash flow is available when we need it. Those kinds of things are still set, and the investments are then made based on a risk analysis around the types of investments that they're investing in. So at the end of the day, it's not looking at one particular investment, doing a risk analysis, saying, "Do we want to or don't we want to?" It's looking at the whole portfolio. So there may be something that's a little more risky, but something else that's less risky, but at the end of the day, they're still evaluating the whole portfolio around the objectives that we have set. So a little bit of Investment 101, but the other thing I do want to mention is, we are planning on coming back to council in May to administrative policies. We are currently looking at the benefits of investing in the One Fund. Currently, we have two investment managers through CIBC and TD that we do our investments through now here in Kingston, and those are all bond market investments. We have been looking, and they actually have both recommended to us that we look very strongly at looking at the equity market, to help balance out our portfolio, to diversify a little bit more in today's market. And the only way we can do that is through the One Fund. So we will be bringing that back to council to have a discussion around, is this good for us? Is this something that we want to do? We would have to change our investment policy to do it. And if we did that, and if AMO got this prudent investor status, then we would be affected by that, but we would have the opportunity to evaluate that upfront before we decide if we even want to go down that road.
Great. Thank you. I look forward to that report. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, your worship. First of all, let me say thank you to Counselor George for the work he's doing at AMO and bringing this back to us, as well as other initiatives. It's a fair bit of extra work, and I think our thanks is deserved. Following on a long conversation I had with the treasurer today, a number of the questions I had here were answered in the previous explanation, I just thought, the way I see this is, we have a fiduciary responsibility, in law, actually, for the city and the investments that we make, and to protect and enhance the assets of the city. So this is a really important decision that we eventually have to make. And so I just thought, worthwhile, if, we know that if the treasurer could explain perhaps a little more detail, what we're allowed to invest in now under the Municipal Act, and then I'll ask another question or two, just to clarify what the motion's about, because that's my main concern here.
Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you, through your worship. So there is a long laundry list in the regulations under the Municipal Act of what we can invest in. Summarizing it, basically, it's certainly anything that has very low risk in terms of things like term deposits and that kind of thing. When you get into bonds, it's based on the credit rating that they have, and it's also based on the term of the investment as well. So obviously, anything that's longer than five years is more risky, and so therefore needs to have a higher credit rating. On average, it's about a double A minus in the bond market that we're allowed to. There's a couple of exceptions on that, but basically, that's the standard. When you get into corporate bonds, and you get into bonds that are greater than five years, or when you get into equities, then you have to do that through the One Fund. And again, there are credit limits that are assigned to those, but that's not something that we could do, or the TD or CIBC could do for us. That would have to be done through the One Fund. And the One Fund manages, they actually have professional investment managers that manage their funds, and then as we would invest in, we would actually just be buying units of that fund. So they wouldn't be investing specific for the City of Kingston, they would be investing within something like a mutual fund type thing where we would be purchasing units of that, but all municipal clients.
Sorry about that. Furthest through you, your worship. My understanding is that what the City of Toronto wanted and what this may lead to this motion, is that currently, the One Fund, as you call it, the One Investment Program, is restricted to Canadian equity, and they're looking, which isn't the greatest investment at the moment, but they're looking to invest outside of Canadian equities. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm not sure what City of Toronto specifically is doing, but that's a good point. This Prudent Investment Standard would allow the One Fund to invest in equities other than Canadian. Today, they can only invest in the Canadian market, and that's been one of the reasons that we've hesitated to participate in that, because that does bring some risks of its own, you're not diversifying. If they get this Prudent Investment Standard, they would be looking at that, and I have been working with the manager at AMO on this, as we've been looking at whether we want to get into this, and he said that they're definitely not looking, obviously, at risk, maybe outside of North America, but they are definitely looking at US equities if they were able to get this status. But they would also be limiting in terms of the percentage that they would be doing.
Okay, thank you. As a follow-up, clearly, we're talking about the city's risk profile and what we would find acceptable risk for our investments. And you said some, I think I would like you to repeat some of the things, interesting things you said about this afternoon, about limited risk and the mix of investments that we would be looking at, just to give council and the public some, a better idea of where we might go, since this is an initiatory motion, really.
So, through your worship, we're looking at, definitely, the equity market is the one that we want to take a closer look at, and whether there's any value to that or not. The One Fund, the Equity Fund, within the One Investment Program, has been around about eight or maybe nine years now, and I can remember going to their sessions when they first implemented the program and looking at it then. And of course, we had some concerns at that point about just being the Canadian equities. So I've been following it pretty closely, and one of the things that we would be looking at doing, if we determine that it is of benefit and we want to bring it back to council to take a look at, one of the things we'd be looking at is the limit of our total investments that we would be putting in there. And based on some of the discussions that I've had with our investment agents, we're looking at perhaps somewhere up to around 8% to 10% of our total long-term investment portfolio. Now, I say long-term because one of the things in terms of investing in the One Fund, in their Equity Fund, is they want you to commit to at least five and preferably seven to eight years of money that you're not going to need to take it out for. And the reason for that is if you, and some of this will be in the report in May, but if you look back at the tracking of Canadian equities back as far as into early 1950s, you'll see, and if you look at returns over various periods, it's about a seven-year period, if you can guarantee seven years, there were no annual negative returns in the seven-year period. The shorter the period gets, obviously, the more chance you have of having a bad year, like we had in 2008. But if you can do it over a seven-year period, you can sort of weather the ups and downs of the Canadian equity market, and so going back, that's been very clear. So one of the things we'll be recommending if we come forward with this recommendation is that we're willing to tie that money up for at least a seven-year period, and that minimizes the risk.
Thank you. Just one, I'm going to, what I got from our conversation, which I think is important, is we're looking at a policy or principle of limited risk through a mix of investments, and that we've got tens of millions of dollars invested in at least two banks, and so it's very important to us, because it's part of reserve funds for some of the things that people would like to initiate. And that we would, the way you're approaching it, or at least initially, and you're going to report on this, I believe, in more detail, is that what I got was a 5% or 10% in the equity and the rest in the bond, money market, term deposit, safer, covered by Municipal Act type investments. Would they have a fair, short, or brief description?
So Counselor Hutchison, I mean, this is a really interesting discussion, but we're starting to stray into the debate we're going to have in May, when we're talking about changing the investment policy. So I've allowed some of this, because I think it's important for the background about whether we want to support this, but I think I'm going to ask now that we shift and actually speak to more the meat of what this motion is, whether we want to support this or not.
Sure, because that was my last question. So if you'll let her answer it, we'll be fine.
Do you have a short answer for that?
Yes, that's correct.
That was fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I kind of thought it was, but I wanted to make it clear to council. Thanks. And I'll just say, I'm going to vote for this, because we get a couple of chances to debate as the mayor was referring to, but I just felt it's important enough that we get off on the right foot. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? So we will call the vote. And that carries. Report number 43 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor O'Sanick, seconded by Counselor Holland, that report number 43 from the Chief of May's Street of Officer Consent be received and adopted.
There are a number of items, A through G. Would anyone like separation? Counselor O'Sanick.
Thank you. B and F, please.
B and F. Counselor Hutchison.
C, and, okay, she called F already, so it's fine.
Okay, seeing no other separations, we will vote on the balance first. So that would be Item A, ratify and confirm telephone poll vote for flag raising. Item D, award of contract, grass cutting, and lawn maintenance. Item E, 297 King Street East, street encroachment. And Item G, application for heritage permit under the Ontario Heritage Act 297, King Street East, Market Square. We will call the vote. And that carries. Item B, agreements required for red light camera program. Counselor O'Sanick.
Your worship, I cannot support entering an agreement for the red light cameras. There's only seven municipalities in all of Ontario that have the red light cameras, and they are all at least five times greater in population than Kingston. Toronto, York region, Hamilton, Halton region, Ottawa, Peel region, London, Waterloo region, they have five times the population, five times the number of drivers, five times the number of intersections, and five times the number of traffic problems. Kingston is small compared to these giants. We can't do a small pilot study with this agreement. The agreement that we're approving tonight is 10 intersections. We can't try red light cameras at just our worst two or three intersections. You know, to me, that would be more appropriate for a size of our city, but in this case, 10 intersections is the minimum, 10 cameras. Our entire city is going to be covered in cameras. When you look at the comparisons, we have Halton, that's four times the population, and they have 12 cameras. You have Hamilton, that's three times our population, and they have 13 cameras. We're like 158,000, and we're going to do 10 intersections. You know, the cameras, they're also really expensive, that's 500,000 per year to operate them all. That's what the contract price tonight, we're committing to. The city is banking on sending out a lot of tickets so that we can recuperate the costs of these cameras. If the drivers stop running red lights, which is the entire objective of red light cameras, you know, maybe we're going to run into not being able to recuperate our costs, who knows? And the contract is binding us to a minimum of five years. That's a long time, especially if we can't cover our costs, or if the residents totally don't like these cameras. We are committing for five years. One of our former police chiefs many years ago, he told me that he himself got a red light camera ticket when he was driving in Hamilton. If it can happen to the police chief, it can happen to any one of us. I want to leave the enforcement of the Highway Act offenses to our Kingston Police Force. This is by no means a Kingston Police Force initiative or a city staff initiative. This came up through the council floor with the last council. There's no question about that, and because we've seen that the minimum is 10 intersections, I can't support that. To me, 10 intersections is just too many for the size of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neal.
Yes, just a little quick background. This indeed did come from a motion from council floor, which is an appropriate place for policy to be set, and it was deferred to the Police Services Board, asking for input. That delayed the process somewhat, so it came back with, indeed, with police talking about, some other places talking about best practices, and saying that they were quite comfortable with this initiative. It was then deferred, again, for a period of time, for our staff to look at best practices. So for those people who are saying, "There hasn't been enough thought put into this, we need to defer it to think about it longer," I would suggest that it's had lots of reflection. The police had a say through the Police Services Board on this recommendation. It was deferred, I would have to say, in part because it was an election year, but the decision was deferred to seek more information, to come back to council to make the decision. I will be supporting this, but I would never, I would not support deferral. We need to have the courage to either say yes or no to this tonight, and not send our already very overtaxed staff away to do yet again, draw up more information. So I say yes or no. I think it does reduce incidents of traffic. You can find reports, both pro and con. Our Police Services Board and our police have said that this is a legitimate option for reducing risk, and these are portable, I believe these are portable lights, so they can be moved to problematic areas. So I'll be supporting this, as I did in the last council.
Thank you. Counselor George.
Thank you, your worship, through you two staff. Assuming that this is supported this evening, and I haven't heard from anyone, so I don't know if it will or won't be, and what we heard from the gentleman who spoke to the red camera intersection earlier, talking about the yellow light timing, and I just made mention to a couple of counselors tonight that I find they're erratic all over the city. You know, there are some that, depending on the time of season, if we had a red light camera there, you'd be catching all kinds of... camera there, you'd be catching all kinds of folks because the yellow light just isn't long enough. And if you're on a snowy evening or a wet rainy condition, you won't feel safe in stopping quick enough. You're going to end up partway out into the intersection and it's going to snap you. If we support this, or maybe, I didn't see it in the report, maybe it was there and I wanted to buy it, but will adjustments be made to all of the intersections where these will be currently placed, that all of the yellow, the yellow timing, the yellow lights will have the same timing so that, you know, if you're approaching one, there's a seven-second time lag or whatever it is, I don't know what the standards are, so that people are not getting caught in situations where they're actually sliding over that crosswalk and partway into the intersection due to road conditions that don't allow them to feel they can stop promptly, safely. And so they either slide through or they drive continually through and they're going to end up paying for doing that.
Ms. Green.
Through you, your worship. The city currently uses Ministry of Transportation Ontario Standards to determine the length of not only amber, but the all-red clearance times. And these are based on the posted speed limit as well as the width of the intersection. So we certainly wouldn't be changing that standard to accommodate a red light camera program. Those clearances would remain regardless of whether we had a red light camera in operation or not.
Okay, because at least one of the intersections on Taylor Kidd that's noted here, I've already, and I don't, I can't speak for the other Westing councillors, probably councillor O'Sannick by myself, or councillor Cannon, because it's, I think, cross-border for the two of them, but I've already received complaints from individuals who claim that the yellow light at that particular intersection is extremely fast. So whether, are these, is this something that we do a maintenance check on so many times a year or something? Because I'm hearing from people that there's no way in the world they can stop in the time that it takes from when they, when the, when the light turns yellow and then turns red, that it's, it's literally less than two seconds. They've done the one thousand and one, and it's red. So is this something that we're going to have to be fearful of, or we're going to do proper maintenance checks on? Because otherwise, we're going to be facing a lot of angry individuals who are going to be taking complaints to the courts to say, the city of Kingston's lights are what caused me to, to be caught supposedly crossing this intersection illegally.
Ms. Green.
Through you, your worship. We do have utilities, Kingston staff, out to each traffic signal controller a minimum of two times per year and often more. We are having several traffic signals re-timed this year. We had many done last year, so those serve as checks as well for the clearance times. So what we can say is citywide, the current lengths of the ambers do range from three to five seconds, and that's dependent on the intersection. And along Taylor Kidd, we can say that those ambers are currently operating at four seconds.
So I should contact utilities, send our Mr. Van Buren, let him know the one I'm hearing that apparently is shorter than four seconds? I'll do that in the morning. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. Question for staff regarding the upcoming traffic calming meeting, which I believe is late April, and whether or not it would be of any benefit to discuss this issue in the context of changes to traffic calming measures.
Mr. Van Buren?
Through you, your worship. That's an interesting question. I guess at, at first blush, I would probably tend not to mix these two topics together. The city's traffic calming policy is, is already fairly well-established. The plans as it relates to the current list of streets that are going to be reviewed for traffic calming under this year's plan have already been established. So I think it probably would be best that our, our public open house to, to discuss traffic calming should be for the elements that are included in that plan. I, I think we may end up creating more problems if we get into a discussion as it relates to red light camera program as part of those consultations.
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, your worship. I, I think that, that's an interesting question as well, because I think that usually a city takes on red light cameras as a, as a policy decision, as part of a suite of safety initiatives to work towards, say, vision zero, or reducing total injuries or fatalities or protecting drivers or making families safer on roads. And it's a larger strategy that includes traffic calming, other road diets and other strategies, signage, timing the ambers, or I like the idea of the signal lights from Calgary when you're, when you're going eighty. We don't have eighty kilometers as a posted speed limit for any of these intersections that are proposed here. But it, it should be part of a safety strategy, and we should be expanding this to become more safe on our roads. I think all of us, when we talked about the transportation master plan, we were demanding more safety, more options, better roads for our constituents. And we, we worked hard on that and we went through many iterations with that. I'm not sure, I, I pulled out the study here and the business case in terms of this. In terms of that, they said that there were twenty-two intersections that were evaluated for six hours each. On average, there were five violations per intersection, and even one of them was recorded having thirty violations. So, so thirty chances that another car, we're not talking about pedestrians, we're not talking about cyclists, another car gets T-boned, resulting in injury or death. In the years that, in the five-year period, we're lucky, we don't have a lot of deaths associated, but we do have injury. The cost per collision was recorded somewhere around eighteen thousand dollars, the societal cost, which is something that we've been asking for in a lot of our reports, is the societal cost of some of the things we're looking for. In terms of the, so that's sixty-four percent of those result in injury or death. Twenty-two percent of rear-end collisions, which apparently go up when you install these for the first time. And so that's something we have to be comfortable with if we go forward with this. But only twenty-two percent of those rear-end collisions actually end up in injury. It's probably because the cars are moving slower at that point or something to that extent. We've made a commitment to safety, and we're nervous about this because I think we've all gone through an amber that was a little close. We can all imagine ourselves getting ticketed for doing something wrong. And I think it's something that we do all the time. We can all drive one hundred on the four oh one on our way to Toronto, or we can all drive one twenty. And if we go through Napa knee and we expect to see a lot more OPP along that stretch, we might slow down to one ten. But that's a risk. We're breaking the law. We know we are. And if somebody makes that choice to go through a light because they were going eighty in a sixty zone, and they were endangering other people with their choice, I don't think we should back down from that. This isn't a war on drivers. This is, this is just trying to make sure we have a safe city and that people are obeying the laws. I think what I like about this report and this plan is that we're not implementing these tomorrow. That once we go forward with this, we're going to start educating about where these are going to be, we're going to have signage talking about them, we're going to have a period where we can let people know what happens with red light cameras, how they work. And there's a time where we can get our public to understand where they fit in. We can move them from it, from intersection to intersection. If we find that we need to have a different place that has more collisions, use data to get there.
Thirty seconds.
And if, and I think the other thing is we get data from this. We need to make data-driven decisions. We need evidence. And, and this is something that's going to provide us with evidence to make future decisions about how we enforce traffic. It's a lot more cost-effective than putting police cars at intersections, even twelve hours a day, ten intersections, twelve hours a day, to catch one or two people going through. And a lot safer for our police officers who do a great job solving robberies.
Thank you, thank you very much. Councillor Bowman.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. So I have some concerns with this, and my first being kind of the due process of this, where you're basically guilty until proven innocent. So I'm worried about the cost and the judicial system when we have numerous people challenging this. And there was a gentleman in Vaughan was one of the quick things that you could easily find, and I believe he had to appear three or four times. When he finally got to speak, he didn't have his wife with him, who was a witness, so then he had to bring her back. And in the end, it ended up being dismissed. But that was four appearances in court to find out that essentially they, it was dismissed for, for whatever reason, technicality. Another concern I have is that we're seeing some reports or some studies are out there that say simply extending the amber light timing can reduce a lot of these collisions. So just meeting the minimum of what MTO prescribes, if we go a little bit beyond that, we can actually see a further reduction. So as councillor Allen mentioned, I think there needs to be a holistic approach here, not just a one solution for everything. Some quick numbers that I was able to pull up online, and Chicago is one of the most heavily red light, red lighted camera districts in the States. And if you go and look it up, there's two point four million dollars in fines that were basically applied incorrectly, and that was from one year. Some of the other stats were that the incidence of rear-ending collisions actually increased twenty-two percent in the first year with a fifteen percent decrease in right-hand turning accidents. The other stat was that eighty percent of the tickets come from people basically passing that line on a right-hand turn, which has complications in the middle of the winter in Canada when you can't see the actual stop line. So that there's a lot of concerns that I have there. Another concern essentially is that with, with these lights, we're only targeting motorists. So with an officer there or more officers on the street, we can perform corrective action on pedestrians, cyclists, motorists, basically make all our streets safer with that approach. Whereas with these cameras, it's just simply a three hundred and twenty-five dollar fine to a motorist, which really in my mind is simply a fine. I don't know if that's going to create a corrective action and make anything safer. There are studies, as was mentioned before, that, that are pros and cons, but I'd like to see a more holistic approach to this, not simply throw a ten cameras up and hope that everybody drives safer. So I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. I think there's another four hands that went up, so. Next on my list is councillor Cannon.
Thank you, and through you. I'd like to support the comments from councillor Bowman and O'Sannick and George. I do feel like right now we're, we're contemplating improving safety, but we're looking at one option as opposed to many options. So the example of extending how long a light is yellow for could, could achieve the same goal in a, in a way that creates more safety. I don't know all of the data on all the different scenarios because I haven't seen them, but with the current proposal, I think that we may be potentially voting for more headaches than we need. For something that I am not necessarily convinced is the, the best option. So like, like I said earlier, extending the, the yellow light could be the best practice for, for solving the same issue with, with much fewer headaches. I'm not, I'm not sold on the idea that it's, it's a better business plan because the business, right now we're not really discussing any type of a business plan. I feel like we're, we're discussing the safety of residents and their driving, which is, which is something worth investing in if we have to do that. But I, I'm concerned that the, the revenue neutral component is less enticing because it's, because we're talking about a much bigger issue, in my opinion. I haven't seen necessarily enough evidence to make me want to support this or be confident in supporting it, because I may, I do feel we may be creating more headaches than we need, and, and we could do it in a, in a, in a different way. Right now we're looking at one option, when I think we could be looking at many options and make a decision, make the best decision on, on many options rather than voting for or against one option. So for that reason, I will not be supporting this motion. However, if someone would like to defer for further information, I'd be happy to support that.
Thank you. Councillor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I was in support of this when it came up at the other council. One of my standing comments when someone phones me about a complaint is, yes, I have heard that one. I will tell you, my number one complaint is speeding, and number two complaint is I didn't know about something, communication. And, and then we will start to discuss if it comes down to that listing of complaints. Speeding in traffic is a huge problem for constituents, because that tends to be a lot of what I will get as a phone call, for how people are able to cross the road, you know, in, in difficult circumstances. And I was in support of the red light initiative. It has to do with big intersections. We're not talking about a broad safety system for the city of Kingston. We're talking about major intersections where we do have a serious problem with people tucking in behind each other as they all turn left and the red light's very, very red as the line keeps coming. We have a problem with people tucking in and crossing. The light is yellow and there's a group goes through. And I think we all know, and we've seen it, and have sort of sat and, holy mackerel, that was quite the blatant going through. I, I do believe it's a serious problem. We've already heard from the, the police a number of times that they cannot bring in any more dedicated policemen to traffic. So we do, in my opinion, have to do something about a problem that has been growing. And yes, education program is, again, what we're talking about with red light cameras. We've been trying education programs with speeding, with, with poor driving habits, and we will continue the education programs. But they don't work in the main for some of the very serious problems that we have. So I have no problem supporting this. I think the best scenario is that we put in these cameras and in five years, we don't need them anymore because people are used to driving safely. So I will be in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
Yes, I take the chair.
Thank you. As has already been mentioned, this issue came up a number of years ago. And I'll be honest with you, when it first came up, I was neutral. I really wasn't sure if this was a good idea or not. But I was open-minded and I looked at the research. There was a lot of work that the last council did on this issue, and I think councillor Neil alluded to that. And ultimately, at the end of the day, I looked at the pros and I looked at the cons, and I came to a decision. And the decision was, they seem to work. There have been very good feedback from other municipalities in Ontario that have red light cameras. Now, there have been some comments about, some issues about cameras in the US, and we have to be careful about that because there have been some horror stories of red light cameras, but not in Ontario and not with the system that we're talking about. So that is a big issue, that we're talking about a system that is reliable. The end of the day, we have a system that's proposed to be revenue neutral. So the projected number of tickets would cover the cost of the cameras. And in my view, I say, well, in that case, it's going to be revenue neutral. If it's not revenue neutral, if it costs us money, that's because people have adapted their behavior and they don't run as many red lights, which means we have a safer community. And in my view, that's a trade-off that I can live with. So I've made a decision that I'm going to support red light cameras, but I'm also sympathetic to the fact that this is now this council's decision. And I know that there are a number of you around this table, and that you maybe weren't there when we were talking about all this research and all this analysis. So I understand some of what I'm hearing about the need to, to review that information. I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel, but maybe there's a way to compile that information so that everybody around this table can make sure they have the same data that I had when I came to my decision, so that you can own this decision. Because it will be this council that's going to own this one or the other. And so I understand where that's coming from. But personally, for me, having looked at the data, having looked at the evidence, I think that this is a good move, so I will support it. Thank you.
I return the chair.
Thank you. Next on my list is deputy mayor Turner.
Thank you. And through you, your worship, I have a question for staff. The question is regarding privacy, and I did read some of the information here, but I'd just like a little more information. Could you tell me, when you, when you receive the ticket in the mail, is the picture of the occupants in the car available on the picture?
Ms. Green.
Through you, your worship. The camera company does make all efforts so that people are not shown in the photographs, and when the ticket does arrive... in the photographs. And when the ticket does arrive, it is virtually impossible to identify the driver or any passengers within that vehicle.
Okay, because I know that was some problems in the States. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody that has not spoken that wishes to speak? Counselor Hutchinson?
Thank you, your worship. I just want to say that I support the comments of Counselor Allen and the mayor. That's my experience as well, that we saw the evidence that on bounce, it works out. To put it very clearly, we're talking about saving lives. That's why this got started by former Counselor Hector. And when you get T-boned, chances are, you're not going to come out of there looking as good as you did when you went in. And the amber light issue, you know, that comes up. And I asked her, and I wish maybe staff can correct this for me, if you enter the intersection, when it's amber, are you liable to a red light violation?
Ms. Green?
The red light camera system is extremely conservative in that the first picture that it takes is if you are behind the stop bar. So before you have even entered the intersection, two tenths of a second after the red light. So if you enter the intersection on an amber, no pictures will be taken whatsoever. So the idea of the camera is it's catching the most aggressive red light motorists out there.
Thank you. I think that indeed was Counselor Hector's answer, more or less. And I admit to some, you know, cameras and public and issues and concerns, but, you know, we're talking about killing people and harming them really badly. And, you know, we, as Counselor Allen said, we probably all or many of us have been in the situations where we've done some borderline things. So, but, you know, you know, when you're breaking the law, especially in a case like this. And it's unfortunate, but hopefully this will lead to safer roads for not just drivers, but there's, if you're speeding, there's pedestrians and seniors and children to be considered. And I think that's pretty straightforward. It pays for itself. And just one gloss on what the mayor said is there's safety programs being set up around this. We'll get some extra safety program and education, which was raised by Counselor Shell. So, you know, unlike what the media asked me, we're not going to make a great deal of money on this. And or to put it another way, hopefully, because people will improve their driving behavior and will be a better off community. So I'm going to vote for this. I thank the mayor and Counselor Allen and Counselor Neil and some others for expressing it really well. And I think there's lots of good reasons to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stroud?
Thank you, your worship. This is a good discussion. One of this seems to be the one where we've got people on both sides and everybody's been very eloquent. So I'm going to try to do my part for the conversation. Start with by saying that this is actually a really big decision because it in a way, it'll set the tone for what this council believes in. We know the previous council supported this. It did not support it unanimously, but it supported this. We've heard from the councillors from that, from that last council who supported it then, want to still support it today. And that's completely understandable. The ones that are unsure are the ones that weren't on council last time. And we're, it is our job to look at this with fresh eyes because things do change over time. And this is all based on the promise that it's going to make things safety, safer. So that's a promise. And it's an unproven theory. It's a hypothesis. We do not know that red lights, cameras in Kingston will make things safer. We don't know that. So it's in a way, it's a dilemma. If you believe that it'll make things safer, then you're in favor. If you're not sure, if you're not convinced, then you don't want to put it out there because it's a very draconian way of dealing with law enforcement. It's like you go through an intersection, click, you're guilty. Oh, you can fight it if you want, but you're getting the ticket in the mail and, and here it is, and it's $325 at the current rate. So that, we better be sure we know what we're doing. The people that do this, that do law enforcement, we have, we have a whole department. It's at arms length. It's called Kingston Police. The Kingston Police are the ones that should be telling us what, what to do on this and why. And really, they should have been the ones to give us a briefing on this. I guess this might have happened in the past, but it hasn't happened recently. So that's just something to remember. Regarding what is this council's take on this, I think is a very important question, your worship, for us to speak on. Because we have been going in a direction right recently that this motion appears to not really be in sync with. This council has been listening to its residents. This council has been doing things for the residents in a very friendly way, taking a picture of somebody who's who goes through a red light, who may or may not be guilty because some of them, sometimes the cameras make mistakes. They take a picture and there's no way of telling whether the law was broken or not. The, the person is forced to go to court and plead their case and they'll be asked for evidence to the contrary that's put against the photographic evidence in the court of law. This law enforcement situation, we're getting in the middle of that. But as a council, we will, as you say, have to, you know, own the decision and will be blamed if it goes wrong. There's also the question of costs that Counselor O'Sannick brought up at the very beginning. This could lose money. It could make money. And I, and I actually feel that either, the only way it actually would be successful if it breaks even exactly. Because if it makes too much money, people are going to complain it's a cash grab. And if it loses money, people are going to complain that that's coming off of, out of the city coffers. It has to be exactly revenue neutral for it to happen. And that is actually also a hypothesis, also a theory. 10 red light cameras in Kingston is probably too many. I agree with that. And at the end of the day, because I wasn't able to convince myself to support this based on all of the reading of all the report, I feel like we need to have another go around. So I'd like to suggest deferral. And I've given the clerks this already, if they could bring it up. Essentially, it talks to getting input from the police at the committee level to, to really hear the case from the police about current law enforcement practices today and where the things are going with traffic safety in the future. Let's face it, the red light was invented 100 years ago. And it may not be, we may be sort of chasing the tail end of the red light's existence.
Okay, so we have a, a motion to defer to the April EITP meetings so that the committee can receive a briefing from Kingston Police about current enforcement practices. So Counselor Stroud, is your intention that you want Kingston Police to give their opinion on red light cameras? Is that, I just want to make sure I understand that that's?
It's just as it says, to receive a briefing from Kingston Police.
Current enforcement practices. Okay. Okay, so let's move back. Counselor Stroud, is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Bowman? Okay, so.
Can I speak? I believe I can speak to time or place. Can I?
You can speak to time or place. Counselor Neil?
Because this has always been a council decision and because EITP is only made up of six members, I would suggest that any report that we should get from Kingston Police should come to council. So the community and council as a whole can receive that information.
Mr. Clerk, can I see you for a moment? Okay, so just in regards to timing, the agenda for EITP has already been set. That's for next week. So I'm going to suggest that instead we defer this to the next council meeting on April the 19th, so that that would give us time to request Kingston Police to come and provide a briefing. If that's agreeable. I see a lot of heads nodding. Counselor Stroud?
I'm willing to consider that a friendly amendment to the motion.
Okay, so we'll consider that friendly unless anyone objects. So the motion to defer will then be changed to, that the clause will be deferred to the April 19th council meeting. So that the, so that council can receive a briefing from Kingston Police about current enforcement practices. Okay, so that's been moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Bowman. So we'll call the vote then on the motion to defer. Please vote. And that carries by a vote of 10 to 3. Okay, moving on to item C, applications for license of sidewalk patios at 275, 226, 240, and 166 Princess Street. Counselor Hutchinson?
Thank you, your worship. All these applications fall on Princess Street in the Big Dig area in my district. So that's why, my usual questions, Mr. Van Buren, probably already knows, certainly knows the answers, but I feel obligated to ask them. The, we've had some consideration. I know the engineering department takes track of this, or they have said they have in the past. And that is, is there a limit to the number of sidewalk patios that we can afford to have on, in downtown Kingston on the Princess Street?
Mr. Van Buren?
Through you, your worship, for council's recollection, a number of years ago, we brought forward a policy as it related to sidewalk patios on Princess Street. And the primary concern at that point in time was the considerations as it related to the loss of on-street parking. At that point in time, council approved a policy that would allow for on-street sidewalk patios to occur in a manner that wouldn't exceed a reduction of 20% of the existing on-street parking at that point in time. So as it relates to these four particular patio applications, they've been tested against that policy and none of them result in a loss that would exceed that 20% of the on-street parking.
Thank you. And through that reply, you're saying this is, we're maintaining that in this case, right? So the other question that comes up occasionally, even from neighboring businesses, is that's one, that's the parking issue and whether there's parking for those businesses that don't have sidewalk patios. And is there sufficient space for pedestrian and wheelchair access left after these patios are installed?
Through you, your worship, yes, there is. I cannot recall the precise dimension for the sidewalk that wraps around the proposed patios, but it certainly does meet the requirements of the patio bylaw.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will call the vote. And that carries. Item F, Community Visioning Exercise and Preliminary Market Analysis for the North Kingstown Secondary Plan Award of Contract. Counselor O'Sannick?
Thank you, your worship. Through you, just two questions to staff. And one is just the process. So we're going to have the visioning exercise. Then there's going to be a public meeting that will look at the draft so they can provide, you know, more input to the draft. When then the final report comes, I guess it will go to planning committee? And then when it goes to planning committee, is it possible that the secondary plan final report could be posted maybe two weeks before that planning committee, just to give the community more than just the standard Saturday for the following Thursday night planning committee time to look at that final version of the secondary plan?
Ms. Green?
Thank you. Through you, your worship, absolutely, that's possible. We're in the process right now of looking at what the engagement strategy is going to be for the visioning exercise. So the visioning exercise is not going to be a singular event. It'll be multiple types of opportunities to connect with the public, either through public celebrations, formal meetings. We're also establishing, hoping to establish a working group that will have members of the public on it and also different stakeholders. That'll be subject of a future report coming to council, I believe, two weeks from now. So there'll be lots of opportunities. But certainly, we also are aware that people need time to digest information. And we will make every effort to have that out there in the public well in advance of any, any decision making that happens either through planning committee or council with respect to a draft product before we even look at a final product.
Thank you very much. And my second question is just the study area boundaries. And I can't remember for Stevens Street and the River Park community. So River Park is right at Montreal and Counter Street. And it's got, I think, 300 new residents moving in there. Are those excluded? And if they're excluded, what was the reasoning for that again?
Mr. Newman?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. So at this point, the study area boundary is preliminary. So we made it very clear in the RFP that part of the initial discussions will be to, to sort of confirm the boundary of the study areas. So at this time, those lands are outside of the study area boundary. But that's not to say that we won't adjust the boundary to bring them in.
Okay, great. So you heard my comments that came from some of the community to include Stevens Street and the River Park community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Neil.
Just very quickly, and perhaps this is going to be an embarrassing question because it may be out there somewhere in the mountain of papers we've received. But has there been a kind of, have we released publicly the criteria for the RFP that went to dialogue? And if not, could we?
Ms. Green?
Yes, you, and thank you through you, your worship. Yes, we did. This was something that was new for the planning department where we made the RFP publicly accessible. Normally, through the city's bid and go process, only bidders were able to access that information by becoming a member of that system and downloading the document. This time around, we publicly posted that through the website as a PDF copy so that the public would be able to see the document that the bidders were bidding on, which included the criteria and the scoring.
Thank you. I'll play detective and I'll find it. Thank you very much.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Thank you, your worship. Of course, as this approaches, interest ramps up. So I was wondering if you could give us an idea of what the methodology or how the preliminary market analysis will be done? And what sort of things they will be considering? Is that possible?
Mr. Newman?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. So the market analysis is looking at a lot of the statistics that are available through the conference board and through some of the, the numbers that the city has published through, some of their other technical studies. One of the things that I think was really positive in the present, in the proposal by dialogue that perhaps set them apart from some of the other bidders was the fact that they started with the preliminary market analysis, fed some of that into the community discussions and some of the preliminary visioning, and then came back, sort of field tested some of the visioning with some of the preliminary market analysis, and sort of enabled the evaluation of some of the visionary ideas through some of the review of, of the preliminary market information. So it was a field testing of some of the visionary ideas to see if they had practical application on the ground.
Okay, I think there's just some curiosity of what a preliminary market analysis will look like, what will be comprised of. I presume it's about opportunities for that area would seem likely, given the data that staff provide. But that's pretty general. And I'm as much guessing as anything else. So I was just wondering if you could give me a bit more of an idea where this is, what direction this is going?
So, so again, Counselor Hutchinson, so the, the recommendation that's before us is to choose who will be awarded this contract. So the details. So, the details of those elements were already decided when we came up with the criteria of the things we wanted in the RFP. So, I'll allow the question, but I'm just going to ask, just to confine to, for example, why it is that staff have recommended Dialogue versus, say, one of the other proponents? Just going to ask you just to confine your your comments and questions to that aspect of it.
Okay, I would dispute that this was described in the previous documents, okay?
So, so I'll allow the question.
So, it's a question of offering a contract to somebody for what are you going to get? Okay? That's what the question is.
So, I'll allow the question, but just for future questions, thank you. Second.
Thank you, and through you. If you look at Exhibit A in your agenda, it would have been part of the addits tonight. There is a section that speaks to your question, Council Hutchinson, that would be 3B. So, in terms of the market analysis, what we're really looking for at a preliminary level is for the consultant to work alongside of us, look at the competitive advantage and the strategies that can be used to develop the land. It's going to look at our marketplace, where we have gaps in our market currently, types of uses, types of business that are here. It's also going to, at a high level, evaluate the development potential of the lands that are within the secondary area, certainly taking into consideration things like infrastructure, traffic, access to those properties, some of the inherent assets of the properties the way they are, and what types of businesses would be potentially interested in locating adaptive reuse of those those parcels. So, it's all going to be done at a high level at this point, as part of the secondary planning exercise that will follow the visioning. There'll be a much more detailed analysis.
Fair enough. If that's what we've got now, that's that's fine. Will, when we do the PMA, the preliminary market analysis, will part of that involve the kinds of what kinds of development will cost the city? Like, will we have some kind of cost-benefit analysis involved in that?
Mr. Newman?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. So, the the details of preliminary market analysis are going to have to be worked out as we initiate the project, but what I will say is that the consultant team has partnered with, so Dialogue is the lead in terms of the the recommended firm that we're proposing. Dialogue is the lead, but they've partnered with Hemson Consulting, who has done a lot of work in the city of Kingston specifically, and has a strong understanding of some of the market components that will need to be evaluated as part of this analysis. So, there is, as part of the the submission to the city, an evaluation of some of the design, the visionary design options that the community puts together, a kind of field testing of the costs and the feasibility of those projects. That was part of the submission, but we're not getting into the level of detail of a structured pro forma analysis of the the overall feasibility of a project moving forward. That's beyond the scope of this project.
Fair enough, and I wasn't expecting that, actually. So, one last question, is that it references the creation of a community working group. Do we have any idea how will that will be composed? I know you're talking about the nominations process. I'm presuming, and you can correct me, that that means the nominations committee, and correct me if I'm wrong, and how we would compose that community group, because there's lots of interested people, and, you know, businesses and the like.
Second.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. So, we do have a report that will be coming for council's consideration on April 19th, so at our next meeting of council, and that provides an overall structure and explanation of how we're proposing to put together that working group. What we did use as a basis for compiling that process is looking at what was done for the waterfront master plan, which seemed to be very successful. So, the breakdown of of the actual working group, I believe we're looking at somewhere between 14 to 16 members. There's a pretty good cross-section of external stakeholders. I believe there's six seats that we're proposing as part of that working group that would be where members of the public would be selected through a nominations process, similar to what we do for other committees, and it would go through the nominations committee, and they would be selected to to join that working group. And it would be a term that that working group would be together for about two years and have intervals that they meet throughout the project.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we will call the vote on item F. And that carries. Report number 44 from the CAO.
Moved by Council Shell, seconded by Council Bohm. That report number 44 from the Chief Ministry of Officer can consider be received.
So, there is one item, Declaration of the Downtown Kingston Business Improvement Area as a tourism area for the purposes of exempting businesses in the BIA from restrictions of the Retail Business Holidays Act on a year-round basis. Now, this is the first time that council has seen a consider report, so there are two options that are presented. So, what I'm going to, in in a moment, Council McLaren, I'm going to open up the floor so that a councillor can move an option. Then that option will be on the floor, we will debate it. If it passes, then we move on. If it fails, then there would be an option for somebody else to move the alternative option. Having said that, Council McLaren.
May I move option two, please?
So, option two has been moved by Council McLaren. Is there a second? Seconded by Council Neil. Council McLaren.
Thank you. I believe expanding holiday shopping expands an unequal power relation and erodes the freedom to exercise a plurality of values in civil society. Having been on both sides of the employer and employee divide, I can tell you that the so-called laws to protect workers' rights are not very effective, especially the lower the income level. This power relation is full of subtle and often not-so-subtle instruments, procedures, techniques, and maneuvers of intimidation, coercion, and domination, all designed to give the appearance of free negotiation and free consent, where there really is not that much. No good comes from supporting, reinforcing, or turning a blind eye to any social inequality. But it is more insidious than just permitting an unequal power relation to persist and deepen. We are debating the erosion of the norms of civil society. Five days out of 365 days are at stake. We are being asked to approve a simple, small increase to people's freedom to shop, a 1% increase in that freedom. But these are holidays. That small 1% increase means we are facilitating the 100% reduction in the time available to express our freedom to do an act in other socially valuable activities. We are, in effect, choosing one value system and reducing or eliminating all others. We are deciding whether or not to move closer and closer to a monochromatic culture in which we, the state, have chosen the one dominant expression of freedom to be the only one tolerated by the state. We, the state, are repressing other values by not allowing even 1%, that's five days a year, of our time for the exercise and expression of non-market values. Higher values, such as love, altruism, benevolence, generosity, solidarity, civic duty, are not like market values. These values need to be practiced to grow and become strong. They are not like money, whose amount is reduced when spent. You do not save or hoard your love in order to keep it. You spend it, and it grows, deepens, and strengthens. Altruism, benevolence, generosity, solidarity, civic duty need to be exercised to grow. If ever you have felt that there is not enough of these higher values in the world, I submit to you that part of the reason is the continual erosion of their public expression. These higher values are first expressed in time with family and significant others. It is with time with family and significant others that higher values are most likely to create the defining moments that shape our lives for good. Make no mistake, this is as high-level as it gets. We are talking about social engineering. We are talking about which value or values we will have more or less freedom to express, and we are talking about the formation of this value or values in the consciousness of the body politic. Please, let us continue to facilitate the conditions necessary for the expression of many freedoms and values, not just one. Please consider your family. Do you enjoy family time? I hope so, but don't make it harder for others to enjoy. Please consider your leisure time. Do you enjoy it? I certainly hope so, but if you do, don't make it harder for others to enjoy. Do you believe that there are other worthwhile values besides the self-interested right to shop? Great, then don't crowd those out. Please, do not harden your hearts against the freedoms that come with a plurality of values. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Neil.
Yes, I was hoping, if option one came forward, to be able to to offer up a couple of amendments. In 1998, when we initially declared a tourist area, it came about initially, as I understand it, with a DBIA proposal that came to council. But the council of the day, months after amalgamation, chose to say, no, if I'm a shop owner in Portsmouth Village, in Berryfield, if I operate a business in the uptown area just a block or two outside the BIA area, there should be a level playing field. This motion, as as it's presently stated, fails to allow that, and I know that I'll hear from businesses in my district, as many more people will as well. I can't, as my question suggested earlier of the delegation, I can't support something that is geographically restricted. I'm not sure if I would vote for it, even if it was citywide, but I cannot vote for it when it's just the DBIA area. I also have concerns about the number of days that are being proposed, the five days, but I'll speak to that if option one comes forward. But I will not, I will support option two that's before us.
Thank you. Council Holland.
Okay, sorry, just for clarification, so we're discussing option one at the moment?
So, so option two is on the floor. Now, to be honest, you may make the same argument, it's just whether you're voting in favor or against option two, but that's the option that's on the floor right now.
Okay, thank you. So, I guess really what I have to say is, just to draw some attention to, make a counterargument, I suppose, on behalf of small business owners, and to emphasize the fact that small businesses represent about 80% of the business in the city of Kingston. These are people who choose to live, work, pay taxes here, send their children to our schools. I think making an argument based on values and suggesting that there are some some values that small business owners don't share or reflect in their desire to get rid of an archaic law is is neglecting the contribution of small business owners. These are not, if you want to look at the logic of opening on a holiday, as a small business owner, in most cases, people are working those hours themselves. They're certainly not choosing to do anything other than provide a skeleton staff when you're looking at paying two and a half times the usual rate. So, there are several key points, I think, that we need to consider based on the information that we have, that has been provided to us. We have the results of a public meeting, we received one online comment that was opposed to offering shopping on these days. And I think the delegation made a really good point when they were discussing the need to be treated fairly, that they really want to see other businesses have the same abilities that some do, based on very arbitrary exemptions. So, for that reason, I will be voting against this. Yeah, and I just, I also just, for the record, have to emphasize that people choose to spend their leisure time in a variety of ways, that the concepts like the nuclear family are based on patriarchy, that there is misogyny inherent in some of those systems, and so to suggest that individuals resident of the city of Kingston ought to spend their time a certain way is unfortunately not reflective of the the most, of all the considerations that we have to to look at when we discuss something as important as what we're offering to residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Council George.
Thank you, your worship, and I certainly concur with what Council Holland has had to say. I think I'm going to be the first to admit, I didn't understand half of what Council McLaren said, so it went right over my head. The only thing I will add is that I'm not sure what he was speaking to in regards to the way he or someone was treated with employment and fairness and that type of thing, but in the abilities to operate, as Council Holland just pointed out, and operate your business if you choose to do so. Last I checked, within the Canadian Constitution, you have a lot of rights, and I don't think that we, as a council, are that political body that should be taking some of those rights away when they're asked of us to support them. I can tell you that, having spoken with the mayor of Sudbury on Friday, they just, in fact, rescinded all of their bylaws, which, and I'm probably a representative here from the BIA, didn't know it because it just happened recently, rescinded all of their bylaws that had restrictions to holiday shopping, and they've had nothing but a very positive reaction from the workforce there, because they are struggling, as a lot of northern communities are. But having said that, people are very pleased that at least they're given that opportunity, and it's their decision, their Canadian right, to decide, do they wish to open, do they wish to to work those days? And as we've heard, and I'm an employer, there are laws out there that govern and provide assurance from employees that they can't be forced to work certain days if they don't wish to, and a good employer will adhere to those, because that's that's the law, that's the way it's written. So, we have to put some trust in those employers in our city that they're going to adhere to those laws, and if they don't, as was noted by one of the speakers earlier, it's up to that employee to notify, you know, the appropriate channels out there in the employment. It's going, I'm just asking for a word here, but anyways, there are government employment sectors out there that look after that. I was hoping somebody would throw a word my way, but anyways. So, I would urge council to vote against option two. I think option one, with, I believe, at least one of the amendments that Council Neil may be coming forward with, I would certainly support, and 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 let's let's look at option one and and see if we can't find something that works for the whole city. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Turner.
Thank you, and through you, your worship. I'd just like to point out that I think instead of what Council Neil said, is we need to look to the future, not into the past, and I think we need to be progressive and not repress our store owners, and I think we need to look at them and say, this is a tourist town, and if they'd like to open in in that section, that they should be allowed to open. So, I am in support of option two, and I would advise everybody, if they would, if they could, to vote against option two. I'm in favor of option one. Thank you. Sorry, no, option one.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I take the chair, and I recognize you.
Thank you. Right now, any store can choose to open on Victoria Day. Any store can choose to open on Canada Day. Any store can choose to open on Labor Day. Any store can choose to open on Thanksgiving Day. The sky hasn't fallen. You can choose to stay closed, you can choose to open, it's just a matter of choice. All we are talking about doing here is extending that same choice to a small subset of stores that currently don't have that option on Family Day, on a couple of other holidays the other months of the year. And again, and this point has been made, this is a fairness issue. Most of the businesses in the downtown can open any day of the year. Most of the businesses in the downtown can open any day of the year if they choose to. It's just a small subset they can't, so we're just leveling the playing field there. This is just simply a matter of choice. Now, to the point that was made about, well, you know, this is just for the downtown businesses, yes, because it's the downtown businesses that have asked for this, so that's why we're asking. If another business in another part of the city wants to come forward, then we can deal with that request at this time. But I don't think that the fact that we haven't heard from other businesses is a reason to say no to the downtown because they have asked for this. In my view, this is a perfectly reasonable request, so I would encourage council, again, not to vote for option two, but to reserve your yes vote for option one. Thank you.
I return the chair.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor Camden.
Thank you, through you, your worship. Um, I, I am going to vote against option two. Uh, I think that this is a very small request and, and it's a very nice gesture you can make to, uh, downtown businesses to ensure that they succeed. Uh, our downtown is one of the greatest assets that our city has, so I think it's important that we make sure that they're working on all cylinders. Uh, I myself am an individual, whether you're high income or low income or whatever income, I think that, uh, or even if, if, uh, uh, lower income people had an option to work on, on, on another holiday, they may want to take that shift because, uh, it's important to get that income. Uh, I'm somebody who would take that shift because, uh, because it would, I would see it as an opportunity to work. Um, it's been mentioned that the current law, bylaw seems redundant, which I agree that it is. Um, and if this was, um, made available to a larger geographical area, I would support it as well. Uh, I do feel that some of the rebuttals, uh, to my stance vilifies the bill, the, the, the business community, uh, in an unfair way. Um, I think that this is just a request to keep local businesses afloat. If you walk up and down Princess Street, some of the, some of the best homegrown stores that we have in the city are, are found there, and this is just a nice act of solidarity to help them out. I don't think vilifying them is, is a fair way to, to approach this. I, I don't think we would do that with, uh, uh, the arts community or the heritage community, but it seems like a pretty common theme in the business community. It's pretty easy to pick up a paper and see that these days. Um, I agree with Counselor, Counselor, uh, the comments that Counselor Holland has made. Uh, the world is a changing place, and I think that we should vote in such a way that is in tune with that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counsel McLaren, you can speak last.
Thank you. So just to respond to a few of the comments that were made, this is not that, uh, people don't share these values. People have lots of different values, and they should be free to express them and have the time to express them. It is not neglecting any business values, it is giving an opportunity for other values besides business. Business has the opportunity to be open six, three hundred and sixty days in the year. We're only asking for five days. It is not the, people spend their lives the way they want to in certain circumstances, but there are a lot of laws and rights that we do have, but they're not always protected as well as we would like. That is why there is still discrimination, in spite of the fact that we have laws against discrimination. That is why there is unequal pay, in spite of the fact that we have laws for equal pay. There are many ways around this, these, and they are being expressed even now. It's hard for us with privilege to see this, but it is still there. This isn't a question of patriarchy. Family can include blended families, single parent families, traditional, whatever that might be, families, but there are significant others at every generational level that may want to spend time together, but we do not have the opportunities if we take that away from them. Because we're talking here about a one percent increase in our abilities and our freedoms to shop, but a one hundred percent reduction in our abilities to express or to have the time to express other values. We're looking to the future. What kind of future do we want? Do we want a future in which only market values are allowed or tolerated? There are a lot more than just those, and they shouldn't be only in the family that they could be expressed. There's many other places that they should be allowed to be expressed, and that's what part of this five days are for. It's just a matter of choice. We have the choice that you are asking, that they are asking for ninety-nine percent of the time in the year, but what we are doing here is we are crowding out the opportunity for other values. If you believe that there are other values out there, then support them. Allow some time for them to be expressed publicly, because these other values, as I said earlier, are not like money. They atrophy when not used. If you save all your love for the time that you need it, you may not have any left. You express it as often and as, as much as you possibly can. That includes for civic duty, for volunteerism, for all the positive social values. It has been suggested that this is a way to help keep business afloat. One extra day, sorry, one extra percent. It also might be a way to ruin them, because there is few shopping days. These are times when people do may want to spend, spend time with their families, and maybe they do want to keep closed, but there are other costs that are associated with that on low volume days. Let's take these lowest of volume days and devote them to some other value expression. That's what this is about. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on option two. So again, what we are voting on is not to enact the enacting bylaw. So we will call the vote. So declare, so since it's option two, if you agree with that option, you would vote yes. If you disagree with that option, you would vote no. Still two people to vote. Can everyone vote again? So that loses by a vote of five to eight. So at this point, I would invite, I invite somebody to move option one, moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Allen. We'll call the vote. Oh, Counselor Neal, do you want to speak to option one?
I do indeed. I was giving other people an opportunity to speak since I spoke to the other one. Um, I do have an amendment that I'm proposing. Unfortunately, and it was explained to me why my other proposed amendment indeed would be, uh, considered, uh, out of order, um, but I will support, if this passes, I'll support any other councillor who wishes to expand, uh, this to make a level playing field. So, uh, but that has to be done separately from this process, as I understand it. I do have, uh, an amendment that I'd like to put forward. Basically, all that it's doing is recognizing the reality, uh, which, uh, business, as I mentioned earlier, business people have been lobbying me to support this, but in every case, they have said to me, I'm not going to open on Christmas, I'm not going to open on New Year's Day, uh, there, there just wouldn't be the business. I can tell you from experience, uh, last Christmas, when all my kids were off traveling and I should have been, I walked downtown on Christmas Day looking for a restaurant, and restaurants can legally be open, and I think I found two or three that were open, uh, one of which wouldn't have been my restaurant of choice, but that's where I ended up going. So I think, I, I think if that's the case, and that's what business people have in the DBIA have, have said to me, uh, I, I believe that, that we should pass a motion that reflects the reality and what the business community in fact will be doing, which is all, all that we've heard from, uh, from the BIA, you know, in the delegations, is how important Easter weekend is to them and their business, and how Family Day would be nice. Uh, but Christmas Day and New Year's Day indeed are not, uh, are not, are no longer just religious holidays. They're holidays, uh, for family, holidays for everybody. That's why, uh, two people that asked me to vote against this, uh, in the downtown area, uh, are of non-Christian faiths, because they pointed out that indeed it's a family holiday to them, and they, they wouldn't want to lose that option. In both cases, though, they said Easter would be nice, uh, to have. So, uh, my, uh, motion to amend is, I believe we have a copy of it.
So, okay, so Counselor Neal, so we have your motion to amend?
Yep, and duly moved and seconded.
Okay, so that's been, I can just get that on my screen. Okay, so it's a motion to amend, moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Osannick, essentially to remove, uh, to grant the exemption except for Christmas Day and New Year's Day.
Exactly. Thank you.
Is there any discussion on the motion to amend only? Counselor Bohm?
Just, uh, point of clarification, the current businesses that can be open, they would not have this, so this would again be creating kind of a two-tiered system, is that?
So, so to be clear, this is just removing Christmas Day and New Year's Day from the exemption so that it would allow then these stores to open on Easter weekend and Family Day, but not Christmas Day and New Year's Day.
So restaurants and other stores like that would still be able to open?
Yes, we're not touching, touching that.
Thank you.
Counselor George.
Thank you, your worship. Mine's a procedural question in regards to the last vote, and I just wanted to ask that question before this one is taken. Uh, mine showed, uh, in support of the last motion, which in fact, I was, I was quite sure I hit the no. In fact, one of my colleagues, who I know we're not supposed to be cheating, looking at each other, indicated they saw me push the red button as well. Can that be amended to be shown as a no, because I?
Okay, hold on. Mr. Clerk?
I don't want to be recorded as supporting it. So I don't.
Okay, so, so what I'll allow then before, so before we take the vote then on the motion to amend of, of option one, we'll all allow a revote on option two. So, Mr. Clerk, if we can, if we can put that up. This again is on the vote of option two, which was not to amend the bylaw. Still two people left to vote. Counselor Hutchinson?
Sorry, I think the, I, I, I'm confused by the negative, okay?
Okay.
If I vote for this.
Okay, so just to be clear, so if you are voting for this, then you are saying that you do not want this subset of stores in the downtown to be able to open on Christmas Day, New Year's Day, Family Day, and Easter weekend? You do not want them to, if you vote yes.
Right.
If you vote no, you're essentially saying that you would rather have option one, which would allow for the exemption to open. Is everybody clear on that? So?
No, we're voting on the?
No, yes, sorry. So this is a revote on option two.
Right. I get that, I just think this could have been done better, okay?
So there's still one person who hasn't voted. Can everyone vote, please, either yes or no? Okay, so that loses by a vote of five to eight. Is everybody happy with that vote? Is there anybody that disputes what's on the screen? Okay, so I'm not, we're not going to do the vote again. Okay, so now, having confirmed that option two has lost, now we are in option one, option one's been moved, and now we're going to do the vote on the motion to amend option one. So this is to exclude Christmas Day and New Year's Day from the bylaw exemption. So this is on the motion to amend. Counselor Holland.
I just hit the wrong button. I was trying to get my mic, I just voted. Um, okay, so hopefully the clerks can scratch that. Uh, my question is, we haven't, haven't finished discussion on the amendment yet, is that correct?
That's?
We're not, or were you calling the vote?
Okay, so are, you would like to speak the, to the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll put the vote on pause, Mr. Clerk. Uh, yes, Counselor Holland, you have the floor.
Thank you. Can we, sorry, can we see the amendment again?
Can we put the motion to amend back up on the screen?
Okay, thank you. So as I understand this, um, amendment, we are changing the, what days we're allowing businesses to open, so we're again dealing with a very arbitrary process based on an informal poll conducted by the mover, um, which I don't support, so. I mean, I think, I'm, I'm afraid what I'm actually seeing is a lot of discussion, not so much reflected in the amendment, but a lot of discussion about right and wrong. Some things are okay, some things aren't, some days are okay, some aren't. I don't have a clear justification for that, it's very fuzzy argument, and so, again, I will not support this. Thank you, and apologize.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the motion to amend? Counselor Neal, you have the last word. See none? Counselor Neal?
Yes, I just want to clarify that my motion to amend has nothing to do with any moral judgment, uh, about businesses that want to be open or closed. What I'm talking about is the practicality and the fact that the majority of people, even those who want those additional shopping days to be granted, have all said to, to me, uh, that Christmas Day and New Year's Day, they wouldn't be opening anyway because it's a family holiday, and it has nothing to do with their religious convictions, it has everything to do with the, the cultural tradition that those are family holidays, and people don't want to work on those days. Whether you own a store or you work, that's the reality. I, uh, that's why I moved this, uh, amendment as we see it. And can I ask staff late, uh, after tonight to check my board? I think I'm the culprit. When I'm hitting the yes button, it isn't properly, uh, registering, so.
Okay, so that's noted, so we will now call the vote then on the motion to amend. Okay, so is there, can, can you just raise your hand if you do not agree with the vote that's on the screen? Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, can I see? Okay, so we're going to do this one more time, and if it still doesn't carry out, then we're just going to do a vote by hand. So we'll take that vote one more time, Mr. Clerk. This is on the motion to amend. This is on the motion to amend. Please vote. It's still one person to vote. That loses by a vote of three to 10. Okay, on the motion on Option 1 as not amended. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? We'll call the vote. And that carries by a vote of 11 to 2. Okay. Moving on, report number 45 from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee. Who has report number 45?
Thank you, Your Worship. My pleasure to present report number 45 of the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee is moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Bohm for consideration by council.
Moved by Counselor Hutchinson, seconded by Counselor Bohm. That report number 45 from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee be received and adopted. So there are four items, would anyone like a separation? Counselor O'Sanick?
Separate item one, please.
Okay, so we will deal with item one first. So that's the Civic Collection Long-Term Plans for the Steam Watch Phoebe. Counselor O'Sanick?
Thank you, Your Worship. First of all, I want to thank staff for presenting all the options to the various committees that heard this and for, you know, meeting with the stakeholders, the friends of the Phoebe throughout this process. Definitely staff kept the options open, then I went to the museum committee, we heard the two delegations tonight. The museum committee liked the idea of sending the Phoebe to Toledo, but once, you know, that was then going to ARC, we saw the outpouring of emails and letters to the editor saying maybe it would be better to stay in Kingston. The ARC meeting was right before Easter weekend, ARC decided to keep it in Kingston, but couldn't decide where, and that's where we are tonight. And since that Arts Recreation and Community Policy Meeting on Easter weekend, we have seen more good ideas come forth with, you know, Doug Flur Park or next to Metal Craft Marine or also Confederation Basin next to the trains. So that's sort of where it's at tonight. And as we can see that the motion is saying that the Phoebe will go into storage while the construction begins on the expansion of the Pump House Museum. So I just want to do a quick amendment and that's so that the Phoebe will not stay in storage indefinitely. Where the amendment is just saying that in that very last clause where it says that staff will look at all the options of keeping it in Kingston and bring it back to council, that instead of it saying at a future date, just strike out those words at a future date and say by September 2016. And in that way, we know that we do want to decide this, we don't want to keep deferring it to another council, right? We want it to come back to this council, us to have the responsibility of deciding where it will go. And staff had said that September, you know, looks to be sufficient time, hopefully. I know there's a lot of options for staff to consider, so that's my motion.
Okay, so there's a motion, I, I think that that's reasonable, I think people caught that. So the amendment is to remove the words in the last resolve clause at a future date and replace with by September 2016. So that's moved by Counselor O'Sanick, is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Stroud. Any discussion on the motion to amend only? Counselor Neal?
Just a quick question for staff, is that a reasonable timeframe? September 2016 is coming up to us pretty quickly and that is, there are a number of complex possibilities for this. And tourist season really is, would be May 2017, for instance. Is September 2016 a readily doable date for coming back with a recommendation that can be a permanent recommendation?
Commissioner Beach?
So I can't make a guarantee tonight because it will depend on the number of options that we have to look at and what degree we are gonna look for community contributions as well. We do though need to identify a budget and get on with actually finding what those sites are and getting a concept ready for council to look at. And we want to make sure that we're transparent in terms of the process that we're using. So we definitely will get back to council before September. May not be the final solution, but at that point, the process should be very transparent and we should at least be narrowing down the concepts that council wants to pursue.
Thank you very much.
Counselor O'Sanick, is that, okay, so that's, so the motion to amend is on the floor. Anybody else on the motion to amend? Okay, see none, so we will call the vote. And that carries. Can I just get the voting screen just here on my desk? Thank you. Okay, so on the motion as amended, is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I was at the museums committee when there was a long discussion about the Phoebe and I just, I wasn't at ARC, so I don't know if this came up as heavily, but one of our deep discussions was, should an artifact be in the open on a permanent basis? So I'd like to ask, open in effect to the elements, even though it, currently it has some kind of boarding around it, it's open to the variations in temperature. So I wonder if staff, one of their options will be how the Phoebe should be looked after as a artifact of the city of Kingston in terms of proper practice. Will that be part of the option or is it, is this ARC basically saying it should be somewhere outside in the city of Kingston?
Commissioner Beach?
Staff actually don't think it's a good idea for a hundred-year-old wooden artifact to be left outside indefinitely and at a minimum, I think there's consensus that there needs to be coverage for sunlight damage and that over the winter, we even winterize the boat right now. So the, the options brought back will be looking at some different ranges. I think the highest level preservation probably would be some temperature controlled inside. But if that's not in terms of the cost that council wants to look at, we will look at some other options as well. But it does need to include some coverage at a minimum. The option that's been costed out included a glassed-in enclosure where it was recessed down, but some detailed design needs to be done for the specific locations and that will be what we bring, bring back in September.
Counselor Cannon?
Thank you through you. With regards to the cost, I know that the last time the cover was built, it was done by, I'm guessing the vast majority of it was done through community members volunteering their time. If there were people in the community who wanted to do something similar to that, if we, I think it was said that we could take down the existing structure and put it back up in a different location, whatever that location is. Is that something that's a possibility to keep costs significantly down? And do we know that if we did put that structure up in a different location, if it could be, if that particular structure, the way it's built today, would it, could, could you enclose that structure as it sits right now in a different location?
Commissioner Beach?
So I, I think one of the pieces that staff are struggling with as well, that the number of volunteers that used to organize, that those donations has been dwindling and that's a normal process that museums and artifacts go through. We will look at though, what the potential options are out there, whether it's through apprenticeship programs or if there may be, I know there's been a couple of suggestions with local businesses that I know do contribute very significantly to some museum artifacts. We will, we will check those options. And one of the options that we may look at is just moving that shelter and, and changing the configuration. So again, I don't have the full list of different options, but we will, we'll definitely let council know what that process is to try and present that number of concepts and we'll do the methodology of how we're gonna limit them down because we can't look at absolutely everything. But the, the existing shelter will be one of the options we look at.
Okay, I guess that was a pretty open-ended question, given the amount of unknowns that we have. During the committee meeting when we were discussing this, I did, it was brought up, the concept of Douglas Flur Park. I'm not sure if everybody remembers, at one point I was, I probably came off a little bit negative, I didn't mean to, about Douglas Flur Park, but the comments that I made were because I feel like that's a underutilized space in our city that has a ton of potential to be a very beautiful space. I think putting a diamond like the, the Phoebe there might be a, a great way to, to attract people to that space. I forget what council meeting it was, but one of the people speaking said that there's not a lot of people who go through there and it becomes a less safe place. But if you look at the Nine North Street, which is about to get renovated, it's, I, I would hedge my bets to say it's gonna become a beautiful building. And I think parking a, a, a great feature like this somewhere in that proximity will give that park the beauty it deserves and it'll make it a, a great place and bring it up to its true potential. I know that when I go to places like Lake Ontario Park, that's a place that's really been brought up to its true potential and I think that Douglas Flur Park may need that, that, that boost. So I, I think that during the committee meeting, that was something that I had thought of, but I'm very interested to hear people's comments and see how this pans out.
Thank you. Counselor Hutchinson?
Thank you. I think Counselor Cannon covered in his question, asked, covered much what I wanted to say. I just wanted to check with staff a couple of things. The, in the report, it says the annual costs to maintain and winterize the vessel are modest, ranging up to a thousand dollars per year. That's in its current location, I presume, and, but it sounds like we're gonna have to have some capital expenditure if we wish to at least protect it from most of the elements. And I'm presuming that would mean we could adapt to the current structure, like close it in one side, glass it in on another. All these options will be looked at, will they?
Commissioner Beach?
Yes, in the more detailed report that we provided to the committee, we did indicate that the, the annual costs have been modest. However, there's gonna be some milestones every five years or so where there has to be some more investment in the, in the structure itself to make sure that it's kept up. We will certainly look at what the options are with the existing shelter and where it can be located. And then the aspect of enclosure, I think we have a, you know, range of some different options that have been provided by other museums and we will research them further and bring back those options.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Allen?
Thank you, and through you, Your Worship. I just, in rereading this motion, I also have a slight amendment I'd like to make. And looking at the third clause here, it says that the Phoebe will be relocated and displayed at a city-owned site, including the Pump House Steam Museum. And based on some of our discussion even this evening with the speakers, I think we probably need to have more options on the table than just the properties that are within city ownership. And there may be potential for partnership with Parks Canada or elsewhere. So I'm moving to amend that in the third clause, we replace at a city-owned site with, within the city of Kingston. And I think that that meets the intent, but I think we probably need to vote on that as an amendment because it does change the nature of it.
Okay, so there's a, a motion that's been put forward. Thank you for putting that in writing, Counselor Allen, so-
It's not very good writing.
It's okay. So if we can just, if we can just collect that motion to amend. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Bohm? So, just while we're putting it up, I think everyone, did everyone catch that? So it's a motion to remove the words at a city-owned site and replace that with within the city of Kingston. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend? Okay, so we will call the vote then on the motion to amend. Please vote. And that carries by a vote of 12 to 1. On the motion as amended? Is anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor Stroud?
I just briefly highlight something because we're gonna have to think about this over the summer and then waiting for the report to come back. Just as an example, the Phoebe is exactly the same age as the Spirit of Sir John Day or the 1095, the locomotive across the street here. There. And that one underwent a significant rebuild and renovation with a, quite a high expenditure to the city. But we, we didn't find from the residents that they, they were upset about that. In fact, it's a very well-loved artifact as well. I would say that the two things, the two vehicles have a lot in common, being the same age and both showing the industrial history of Kingston. And I, I think that we should keep that in mind as, as we wait for the report, that the Phoebe really should be considered along the same, in my opinion, same, same level as the, as the locomotive. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I take the chair and I recognize you.
Thank you. So, so I'm happy to support this motion because we're essentially investigating a number of different options and I'm optimistic that we'll be able to come up with something that is not only viable but also makes financial sense as well. So my, my final judgment will very much depend on what sort of dollars we're gonna be talking about with these options. But I'm just gonna put this out right now. I'm looking for opportunities to partner, either with Parks Canada or with other private sector entities in Kingston. If this is a priority for the community, then I think the community is also gonna need to step up. I don't think that all of this necessarily needs to be on the city's dime, especially if we're looking at some significant dollars. So that's gonna be something that I hope comes forward in some of the options, but certainly at this point, I'm open-minded and certainly hopeful that we'll come up with a good solution. Thank you.
I return the chair.
Thank you. If there's nobody else that wishes to speak, we will call the vote on item 1. And that carries. So we'll call the vote now on the remaining items in the report. Item 2 is Report on the Progress of the Museums and Collections Advisory Committee, 2015-2016. Item 3, Amendment to the Definitions in the Ten Year Municipal Housing and Homelessness Plan. Item 4, Request for Status Update Report of Baseball Facility's Maintenance. Call the vote. And that carries. Nothing from Committee of the Whole. We do have one information report, Waste Recycling Strategy Update. No information reports from members of council, no miscellaneous business. Counselor Hutchinson?
I just want to, on the information report, I just wanted to thank staff for, just in case they thought we didn't care, about the, some of the 2016 goals and initiatives and particularly improving some of the waste, the recycling recyclables and increasing our rate of re, of recycling. They do the scrap metal and batteries and, and doing the training programs, which actually seem to be having an effect, which sometimes is surprising, so, okay?
Thank you. So just looking at our time, I'm gonna need a motion to extend the meeting. Counselor Neal, a motion to extend the meeting to-
To complete the agenda, I believe. To complete the agenda. I believe the two remaining items are both time-sensitive.
Okay. So can I have a seconder on that motion, please? Seconded by Counselor O'Sannick. This is on a motion to extend the meeting to finish the agenda. Please vote. And that carries by a vote of eleven to one. Okay, on to new motions. Number one, moved by Deputy Mayor Turner, seconded by Counselor Holland. Whereas the Federation of Canadian Municipalities represents the interests of municipalities on policy and program matters that fall within federal jurisdiction. And whereas FCM's Board of Directors is comprised of elected municipal officials from all regions and sizes of communities to form a broad base of support and provide FCM with the capacity to carry the municipal message to the federal government. And whereas the city of Kingston has previously benefited from having city of Kingston representation on the FCM board, whereas the Federation of Canadian Municipalities is seeking nominations to their Board of Directors, and nominations must be received by Tuesday, May 16, 2016. And whereas nominations to the FCM board must be supported by a council motion which indicates the financial support of that council. Therefore, be resolved that the Council of the City of Kingston endorses Counselor Richard Allen to stand for election to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Board of Directors, starting June 2016 and ending in June 2017, and that the city of Kingston agrees to cover the travel expenses related to Counselor Allen attending meetings. Is there anybody that wishes to speak? Counselor Allen?
Thank you, and I'll just be really quick. I just, I just, we've already seen how much a benefit we get from having a counselor on the AMO board with, through Counselor George, and I think it's important for our city to be part of the conversation at the natural, at the national level. And so I'm, you know, with your endorsement, I'm happy to put myself up in the election to compete for a board position, and I invite all of you to join me in Winnipeg, early June, to help rustle up some votes and get our city representation on the board. And if you want to know what Winnipeg means, come talk to me afterwards. Otherwise, just please support this so we can move forward with the election. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I take the chair, and I acknowledge you.
Thank you. Certainly, I wholeheartedly support this, and I hope that all of council will support this as well. I think it is a great idea to have somebody at both AMO and FCM that can provide a two-way information flow so that we have a representative that can report what's going on in Kingston, but also hear back about some of the initiatives that are going on across the nation. I think the other thing to point out here, and I think that this is strategic, having Counselor Allen as the representative of the rural area of the city of Kingston, I think there's really an opportunity to also invest Counselor Allen with responsibility for Eastern Ontario, because this is a board that's national. And so as much as we want representation for Kingston, we really are taking more of a regional approach. And so I think having Counselor Allen would be an excellent asset for us as a region as well. Thank you.
I return the chair.
With that, we will call the vote on Counselor Allen. No pressure. And that carries by a vote of thirteen to zero. Okay, new motion number two, moved by, oh, Deputy Mayor Turner, will you take the chair, please?
I take the chair, and I recognize you. Oh, I gotta read the motion. Whereas the city of Kingston and communities across the country have been encouraged to participate in the Mayor's Poetry City Challenge issued by the Mayor Nahih Nishi, city of Calgary. And whereas the Mayor's Poetry City Challenge is a celebration of poetry, writing, and publishing, and whereas participating in the challenge will identify Kingston as a community that values and supports the contribution of the arts, in particular poets, writers, to the quality of life. And whereas National Poetry Month is celebrated in Canada and the United States for the month of April. Whereas be it resolved that notwithstanding the proclamation policy, the month of April be declared National Poetry Month in the city of Kingston, and the city of Kingston poet laureate Helen Humphries be invited to present a poem at the April 19th meeting of council in recognition of the National Poetry Month. I return the chair. Okay. Please vote. Unless, would anyone like to discuss the motion? Please vote. I'd like to return the chair.
Thank you. Just note that that second motion did carry as well. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk calls for minutes.
Moved by Counselor Allen and seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner. That's a minute. So special city council meeting number 2016-8 held Tuesday, February 23, 2016, and special council meeting number 2016-9 held Wednesday, March 9, 2016, and the mandatory regular city council meeting number 2016-11 held Tuesday, March 22, be confirmed?
Please vote. And that carries. We have some tabling of documents. We have a number of communications. Is there any other business? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk calls for bylaws.
Moved by Counselor O'Sannick, seconded by Counselor Holland. That bylaws one through four and seven be given their first and second reading?
Please vote. That carries.
Moved by Counselor O'Sannick, seconded by Counselor Holland. That clause 11.34, bylaw number 2010-1, be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaws one and two, three readings?
Please vote. That carries.
Moved by Counselor O'Sannick, seconded by Counselor Holland. That bylaws one through seven be given their third reading?
Please vote. That carries. Motion to adjourn, moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor George. Please vote. Still two people to vote. Please vote again. And that carries. Thank you very much.